Good evening. Welcome to the January 29, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. Just a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded for the open meaning laws of the state of Massachusetts. Tonight we'll continue the public hearing for 144 Secong Street, Lakeland Hills Comprehensive Permit. At this time, I'd like to introduce the applicant, Chris Agostino, attorney for Mr. O'Hart. And I apologize, I do not remember your name. I think it's Kristen, is it?
Yes.
Was your, you handle the wetlands or?
Civil.
Civil, sorry about that. Okay. Chris, I think what we're going to do is we're going to have Marta Nova present her wetland review after you have your brief introduction.
Sure, and not much other than just that. Discussing wetlands this evening and traffic, particularly the configuration of the project site entrance, and hopefully, we can wrap up those two substantive issues relative to the application this evening. So we're prepared to hear Beta's summary report. We received the report, and then a subsequent follow-up on some information that they wanted to potentially see in connection with our application, and I can respond to that once we, once we hear their summary. Just to give the board a little bit of background on the status of some of the other issues that we discussed at the last hearing, in particular, the wastewater treatment plant design and some of the groundwater mounding issues associated with the wastewater treatment plant. We've been working diligently on all those issues, and I think we agreed that we're going to have a submission by February 15th that includes an updated plan set which incorporates the groundwater mounding analysis, as well as some of the additional information that the board's peer review expert on groundwater mounding wanted to see in connection with some of the details on that aspect of the design. So we'll be submitting that on February 15th. Some of that information, as far as updated stormwater calculations with respect to the reconfiguration of the site design, have implications on some of the wetland issues that Beta's going to be discussing. So they'll have, some of the information they're looking for is in that subsequent submittal that we'll be producing. So I can address that more once we hear from, from Marta Nova, and then we'll get into the traffic discussion, so.
Great, okay. At this time, Marta, come on up.
Can you move the microphone?
Yes, Marta. It's for the folks at home.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Marty Nova with the Beta Group. The board asked the Beta Group to take a look at the project and the site to evaluate the potential impacts on the bylaw wetland resource areas that the project may have, and we found that there would likely be some significant impacts to the bylaw resource areas. In particular, the buffer zone, the 100-foot buffer zone to the vegetated wetland that is on the site. And I'd like to note, make a note that the buffer zone under the bylaw is actually a resource area, whereas under the state laws and regulations, it's just an area subject to jurisdiction. There's a big difference between the two. So, so under the bylaw, it's protected. Under the state, it's just jurisdictional, meaning any work in that jurisdictional area would be looked at to make sure that the adjacent wetland wasn't impacted. Here, the buffer zone, which is a resource area under the bylaw, would be impacted because there's significant clearing and grading in the 100-foot buffer zone. Just real quick, the wetland on the site, it's just a narrow wetland that essentially runs southwest, northwest to southeast. It's narrow. It has a thread in the middle of it, which we observed during our December onsite to have a flowing channel in it. It started above the actual wetland boundary that's shown on your plan, and under the bylaw, that particular channel would be considered a stream. So the stream actually starts above the flagged boundary that's shown on your property, on the plan.
Marty, I think it might be helpful if we could put that plan up.
Do you have a plan? Yeah, that'd be great.
Is that the, um, would be under the civil?
Yeah, you can C dash 2.2. 2.4 has put up the best.
Actually, 1.2? The overdue?
I'd actually like to see the, the plan that shows the grading limits of clearing roadway, and it actually shows the wetland on it.
Would be this one? If you want the photos, they go to 5.2 and 5.3, right?
Yes, that's the one. So, yeah, we'll start there. So anyway, this is the, the top of the delineated wetland. There's, there's a small area of isolated vegetated wetland that was delineated by the state during the ORED, superseding ORED process, and then below that is the bordering vegetated wetland. Above this isolated wetland is, is a stream thread that probably flows, you know, starts here and flows down, hits the IBW, and then continues down through the, the BVW, all the way down to where the road crossing is on the south end of the, of the project site. Maybe you can go to the next plan. So anyways, so my, my December 17th letter, it was actually a January 17th letter, goes into quite a bit of detail about the site, and then the work that's being proposed on the site, and how it may have impacts on, on the buffer zone and the, and the adjacent wetland. But basically, the, our findings is that the ZBA really doesn't have the information that you need to make an informed decision on whether or not to waive the bylaw. The, the buffer zone in this case has a lot of significant, significance to wildlife habitat, as well as protection of that small, narrow wetland that goes through the property. The overstory there is nut-bearing trees, you know, which has a significant food source to wildlife. In addition to that, if you clear the buffer zone and you change the drainage patterns, you will have an, you will have an impact on the actual water budget of that stream that flows through there, as well as the wetland. In addition to the, the stream and the wetland, there is a, what we feel is a bylaw vernal pool. We, we observed it when we were out there. There was some, probably 18 inches of standing water. It was quite, it was quite a large area, and from what we can see, it likely holds water for two months during the breeding season, which would meet the bylaw definition of a vernal pool. So if you clear up to that wetland boundary, or near it, and you change the drainage patterns by clearing, grading, filling, you know, and cutting, and redirecting runoff to stormwater basins in different directions, you change the recharge to that area, which will ultimately could dry it out, which would have an impact to the, to the vernal pool. So there really hasn't been enough study of the area to determine whether or not, you know, the, the reduction in recharge from, from the grading and the impervious surface, and just the, the development in general, what will happen to that, to that wetland in five years, 10 years? So I think that the, the board, when you make your decision on whether to waive the bylaw or not, you really need more information on what, what will happen, so. So what I did was, I provided an addendum letter with what I felt is needed from the applicant, and I can just read it to you. We feel that a science-based buffer zone analysis needs to be provided, and I go into upland 100-foot buffer zones protects the ecosystems and functions and values of wetlands, waterways, and water bodies by maintaining water quality, hydroperiods, and water budgets. So this science-based buffer zone analysis should include a description of the existing biological condition of the buffer zone adjacent, adjacent areas subject to protection under the bylaw and overall site, a description and quantity of both temporary and permanent impacts to the buffer zone adjacent to these resource areas protected on the bylaw, and then the term alter is defined by your bylaw, and that's what the applicant should use when they describe the impacts and the alter, and the alterations. They differ from, from the state. They're much more detailed and inclusive. Identify and describe description of the bylaw interests that those resource areas are providing, including the buffer zone currently, and then evaluation of the compliance with the bylaw performance standard listed below for proposed activities within, within these resource areas, including the buffer zone. No net change in runoff volume or peak flows, no adverse impacts in runoff quality, no adverse impacts to groundwater recharge, no adverse impacts to wildlife and wildlife habitat as a result of the change in the water budget that is currently supporting the buffer zone and adjacent resource area, vegetation, and the vegetated wetland and streams hydroperiod. The water budget analysis should take into consideration precipitation, runoff, evapotranspiration, soil moisture, and groundwater inputs. Climate change forecasts should be part of this water budget analysis. Hydrological calculations specific to the concentrated surface water flow observed in the wetland on the project site on December 12th that demonstrates that there's no, there'll be no adverse effect on its hydroperiod. Hydrological calculations specific to the potential bylaw vernal pool documented by Beta on the 12th of December within the vegetated wetland on the project site that demonstrates no adverse effect on its water budget, meaning, you know, right now, a vernal pool needs a certain period of, of water, and the applicant should demonstrate that there'll be no change in that water budget for that vernal pool. Evaluation of the potential vernal pool during the normal, during normal wetland weather conditions to document whether it meets the definition found in section 5, parentheses 38 of the Norfolk Wetlands Protection Regulations. And this evaluation should be conducted by the board's peer reviewer in conjunction with the applicant. So when they're out there documenting that that pool isn't, doesn't hold water for two months, someone else should be out there with them at the same time to also document it. So that's the summary of what I've found so far. I'm here to answer any questions.
Sure. Questions from the board?
Buy more detail?
Kevin?
Just to be clear, would you mind just pointing out on the plan exactly where that stream was that feeds that?
Sure. I can't tell you exactly, but I can tell you approximately. It's, it, it starts up in this area here, maybe not quite that far, comes across and then hits, it's right here. It's kind of hard to see from here, this close. Hits here, and then it continues to flow down through the, through the wetland system.
So was that stream, kind of goes, this kind of goes back to the discussions we had with Mr. O'Hart back in 2017. Was that stream potentially impacted by that constructed road that had been put in a few years ago?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
From what I can gather from being out there, it visually begins right at the edge of that road, dirt road, yes.
Anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mike?
I mean, I want to study this a little bit more, but this seems to be really significant information that we, that you've come up with.
Definitely will, as we go forward. Any questions?
Give the same as Mike, this is significant information.
Yeah. And I know the applicant, the applicant only received it two days ago, so.
On the pitch, respond.
Are you? Okay, good, okay. All right.
Can I actually ask a question?
Dan, go ahead.
I think it would be helpful to, Marty, if you could elaborate a little bit more on what a hydroperiod is, what a water budget is, and why those are important considerations in analyzing impacts on a project.
Sure. The hydroperiod really is the period of where, where the soils are, are wet. So, you know, you have a wetland, and the hydroperiod is like, when are, you know, how long are they wet for? So that, if they're wet, it's a wetland. The water budget really is the ability for that depression to maintain its amount of water that's generally in, in that depression year to year. So if things change around that depression, that would maybe redirect surface flow or reduce a groundwater input into that depression, that would change its water budget. And there's, in the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations and Standards, they actually talk about water budgets, and they actually recommend a certain method to use to calculate and determine water budgets, and it's really more discussing stormwater, rain gardens, and things like that, but they do, there is, there is a model and a method that they could use to determine water, the water budget out here, I believe, so.
So that will help us with the vernal pools?
Right, right. That's, yes.
The idea behind it?
Right.
Okay.
My understanding is that a project could have an impact either by decreasing the amount of water, volume, or rate that goes into a wetland, or potentially could increase it if a basin or stormwater features are feeding, feeding the wetland, and you'd want, you wouldn't want either to happen. You'd want to mimic, post-development conditions would want to mimic pre-development conditions in terms of the volume and rate of flow that goes into the wetland. Is that?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. You know, like, a vernal pool, you add water to a vernal pool that may not, it does, it does impact it because, you know, the, the type of vegetation that's there, the quality of runoff that enters that pool will make a difference to the, to the breeding habitat. It may not happen immediately, but over time, it may have an impact. So if stormwater is being directed to that pool, you know, it will have, it will have contaminants in it from just normal development-type activity that would have an impact.
And in terms of this vernal pool, you reference, I think you characterize it as a bylaw vernal pool. Is there a difference between a bylaw vernal pool and a state vernal pool?
There, well, yes. Under the bylaw, the pool just has to hold two months' worth of water to be protected. The applicant has the opportunity to go out and prove that it's not a vernal pool. That would have to be done in the spring, during breeding season, under normal weather conditions. It'd have to be, you know, the pool would have to hold water, and it would have to be documented that there's no breeding habitat in there. But until they do that, the bylaw protects it as a vernal pool. Under the state, it wouldn't be protected as a vernal pool. It would have to be certified by natural heritage. So if it is a vernal pool, and in the springtime, someone is out there representing the town, they could actually, actually document vernal pool breeding in there and get it certified.
And if it's certified as a vernal pool, then is my understanding that the wetland would then be subject to greater protection under the stormwater management regulations, which, among other things, I think preclude stormwater basins from discharging water directly into a wetland? They have to be offset from the wetland if there's a vernal pool because it's, because it's classified as an outstanding resource water? Is that?
You can't directly discharge into a certified vernal pool. The, the added protection afforded by a certified vernal pool is the, the adjacent wetlands to that pool are considered vernal pool habitat, and it had, and that is a more valuable wetland because it is habitat to that, to that vernal pool, which adds more value to the buffer zone, even under the state regulations. Under the bylaw, the buffer zone is already a resource area, which is, you know, very important to an adjacent vernal pool, because that upland buffer zone is where the vernal pool amphibians, they live year-round. They just breed in the pool, and then when they're done, they leave the pool, and then they live in the, you know, adjacent, adjacent forest land, so.
And you said in Norfolk, the buffer zone is a resource area as compared to the state law, where the buffer zone is not a resource area, but is an area that's regulated nonetheless?
That's right. It is regulated. I have found that typically, when there's no protection of the buffer zone by a bylaw, there, the state tends to allow work right up to the wetland boundary, is what I've found. Even, even in cases where there was an adjacent certified vernal pool within the wetland system itself, the state still tends to allow work right up to that, that wetland boundary, unfortunately, so.
And then, this is, this is classified already as a BVW, a bordering vegetated wetland. This, this site has been already delineated, and that delineation's been approved, I believe, by the Conservation Commission for the identification of the boundaries of the wetland, as well as what is the wetland? The resource area identification is a BVW. Is that correct?
That's right. They determine that it was a bordering vegetated wetland. In order to be a bordering vegetated wetland, it has to border on a stream or water body. So it's already been determined that it does border on a stream or water body. So when we were out there, we were fortunate enough to be able to document that intermittent stream flow through that wetland system.
And the stream flows offsite?
Yes, through, south. That is correct.
And does that eventually hook up to the Charles?
I believe it does.
Okay.
I believe it does. So, I forget if your question was?
Sorry, where exists, so where approximately is the vernal pool that we're speaking of?
Amy, can you get a, the map that shows sort of the whole thing, so Devin can get a better, you know, that shows the whole site? Because it's, I think there shows it pretty easily if you show the whole site.
You're, you don't have a copy, maybe do, in our, in our January 17th letter, there's a picture of the vernal pool, so.
There's a, okay. This will help.
Is it January 17th letter?
It is. It's in, yes, it is.
Where do you want to see the stream, right, Devin?
There's some, a picture of the stream as well.
He's just a couple photographs.
So this?
So right here, right here is a photograph of the stream channel upgradient of the, the BVW and IBW flagged boundary. And here is the vernal, bylaw vernal pool, right here, and it's described in my letter what flag numbers it's near. So 63 and 80. Have to go back to the plan showing the wetland flag numbers? I'm not sure I'm going to be able to read them.
If you go to the, any others in the plan? If you go to 2.2?
Say again?
It's the large body that's marked off. That's the area.
2.3, 2.3.
And it's maximum depth is eight inches deep. And Ed Hutchinson has already looked at it and ruled it.
The, the depth of it doesn't real, it doesn't.
I guess there's a criteria with, sorry, there's a criteria with.
Can you get a mic? Yeah.
I guess there's a criteria with volume of water?
It has to hold water for two months, yes, during the breeding season. So it's not the breeding season yet.
So it's in that balm area that's in the middle?
Yes, yes. So really, the best, the, the time to look at it would be March and April. And you'll see the full depth of water. And when we were out there, it had rained prior, and, you know, it was deeper than eight inches at the time. I don't know when they looked at it, but it probably fluctuates as far as depth goes based on precipitation. And again, it's not high groundwater really until March and April, and that's when, that's when it should be looked at.
Mr. Chairman, all right, Mike, I have a follow-up question. So your recommendation to the board is that within the March and April timeframe is when we should be doing the, the science-based buffer zone analysis, as well as the two hydrological calculations, and the evaluation of the potential vernal pool? All four of those should be done in that timeframe?
No, you, just the vernal pool. The rest could be done at other times.
The rest of it's more desktop, right?
Yeah, well, the calculations are yes, and the buffer zone analysis, you know, on the ground, describing what's out there, I mean, that's done in the field, and that could be done anytime.
Amy, can you put the, the existing condition plan back up that has the grading elevations? Yeah. Can you go up, can you do the upper section?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Marty, I just want to ask you about this area here. So this, this looks like a valley, and I think this is where you said you saw, actually, photo number one. Was that taken from this valley area here?
Yes.
Okay. So does, does a stream flow start up in this location approximately, or?
Approximately.
Okay. And that's just runoff, or is it fed by something on the ground, or do we not know that yet?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's likely a combination of, it's, you know, groundwater discharge and, and runoff, but in the areas adjacent to the wetland system where it's forested, there's not a lot of obvious runoff that's entering that stream. It's, it's, I think it's mostly groundwater discharge. The groundwater is discharging to the surface, and it's flowing down, down gradient. I mean, there's a gradient from, you know, from north to south, and it's just flowing down that way, so.
Did you touch in your letter the potential blasting could have on, like, resource areas such as this?
I did not.
Okay. Do you think that could be a potential consideration if there's ledge present on the site and given a certain proximity that, you know, if it's fed by that groundwater, that these could potentially be disturbed and possibly drained if the, the ledge is cracked and?
Possibly, yes. Yeah.
All right.
I mean, this wetland system is, I, I feel is important because it's the only wetland system out there. So, you know, usually streams, stream systems and wetland systems like that, it's a corridor for wildlife, and it's important.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it would be helpful to, to hear from the Conservation Commission about Marty's letter and about her recommendations, and I don't want to put Dave on the spot tonight, but I think at some point it'd be great to understand, are these the kind of things that the Conservation Commission would ordinarily require in a case like this to evaluate a notice of intent that was filed with the Conservation Commission under the local bylaw? Because you are, you're all stepping into the shoes of the Conservation Commission for purposes of the local bylaw. You're essentially issuing an order of conditions under the local bylaw. So if the Conservation Commission would require this kind of data and analysis from an applicant, then, then, then you're entitled to consider that and, and ask for the same kind of information, you know, depending on whether the applicant has an objection to that or not. So I think at some point, if we can get some input from the CONCOM on that, that'd be great.
Yes, okay. Don't go, yeah, don't go too far, Marta. All right, Chris, go ahead. You can sit down, Marta, I'm just saying. Don't leave the, don't leave the building.
Thank you. So we had a chance to review the memo and the request for additional information and we break it down into two buckets. One is a bucket regarding protection of habitat and the other is this issue of evaluation of hydrology. Is the wetland going to be dried up by what we're doing? Habitat is an issue of that upgradient portion from the wetland because that is something that generally the state law does not protect. And there's some general science about wetlands protection, generally speaking, that it is the habitat upgradient from the wetlands where breeding occurs and, you know, certain species are using that in addition to the wetland resource itself. So generally among professionals that are wetland scientists, there's a push to have some protection for that. We're asking for a waiver from that under the local bylaw, all right, in the habitat sphere, all right? As far as habitat's concerned, we're asking for a waiver from that and we will comply with the state requirements, which as Marty indicated, do allow for alteration up to the wetland buffer. So unless the board or the CONCOM in comments to the board identify some specific, unique, critical, local concern regarding the protection of habitat, that is generally something that is not, is not game in a comprehensive permit process before the zoning board at this stage. If the CONCOM were to say there are conditions that we would like to see imposed or specific elements of the CONCOM bylaw that they'd like retained, then that they can then evaluate during their CONCOM process, because as you know, we have to go back before the CONCOM, then they can suggest that. And they still will have the bite at the apple on that. I disagree with Dan's characterization that this board is now issuing an order of conditions for this project. We're far from that at this stage. This board is simply considering whether to waive local wetlands bylaws that would then tie the CONCOM's hand if they wanted to protect habitat. So if there's some local bylaw at issue regarding the protection of habitat, then habitat would be fair game. But I would point out that the technical memo that Marty referenced, the memo regarding the protection of habitat, habitat generally is referenced in the CONCOM bylaw, but the performance standards regarding the review that she's identified are not part of the local bylaw. So if the CONCOM wants to point to something local on habitat, we'll field that. The other half of it is hydrology and whether or not we're going to dry up the wetland. Again, that is a common theme in development, all right? This is not earth-shattering news. You know, this is, this is common when people are concerned about large-scale developments. They want to make sure that we're not trampling through wetlands and drying them up. That's hydrology. When we priced out Beta's peer review budget, we made a note that, wait a second, the general civil review is going to be reviewing the stormwater management calculations for this project. We do have a comprehensive stormwater management report that is continuing to evolve and additional detail is being added to that. And Kristin has, we've discussed this at length, dealt with many projects and many developments and a common concern is drying up the wetlands. That's what the stormwater management calculations are for and those performance standards are addressed under the State Wetlands Protection Act. There's some indication, Marta referenced, that if it's a vernal pool, there might be some additional protections. This is not a state-certified vernal pool. It's either certified or it's not, okay? They could, we have an order, we have a SORAD for the site. This area was evaluated. It does not qualify as a state vernal pool. So those performance standards would not apply. But we will meet the state performance standards with respect to stormwater management and those performance standards will demonstrate and the state will certify it and your CONCOM will certify it, that according to the HydroCAD, we're not going to dry up the wetland. So Tetra Tech is reviewing that side of it. So as far as the supplemental memo requesting information, one, A, B, and C relate to that habitat question, all right? Protection of upland habitat. And again, I've indicated the MACC Buffer Zone Guidebook that has some performance standards and guidelines or guidance on these issues is not referenced in Norfolk's CONCOM bylaw. Some towns actually do reference it and incorporate it. CONCOM's bylaw in Norfolk talks about habitat generally. To the extent the CONCOM wants to identify something specific, please do. And then we can have a conversation about that. But as far as this board requesting and us commissioning a buffer zone study, we're not going to do that at this stage. So I can answer that question right now. On hydrology, yes, we are doing that. And we will give Tetra Tech sufficient information for them to evaluate the performance standards and Tetra Tech will weigh in as to whether or not we have an issue with our stormwater management report. So with those two buckets, that's our answer. And we look forward to seeing if the CONCOM has any response to Marty's report. Again, we just saw the request for information yesterday. You know, we know schedules can be tight and these things happen, but as far as our answer, as far as we sit here today, we're not going to be doing any habitat analysis, but we will continue to evaluate stormwater. The last point I'll make, you know, Marty described some of her observations and conclusions regarding intermittent stream and an additional resource area as far as a local vernal pool. We disagree with those conclusions. Again, the local bylaw requires a definite channel. Mr. Rockwood, our wetland scientist, has walked the site. To date, no one has identified a definite channel. The pictures that you see of water pooling and then flowing down gradient do not evidence a definite channel. So if the town wants to commission someone to go out and flag a definite channel, it's, the town's prerogative to do that. I know the chairman's walked the site. This site for a Chapter 40B project has probably had more evaluation of local wetland concerns than any site I've been a part of, some with much more extensive wetlands on site. I'm actually familiar with other 40B projects and traditional projects in Norfolk where wetlands were not so much of a focus. But for whatever reason, this project has struck a nerve and we've done our best to answer all the concerns regarding wetlands. But, you know, at this point, having seen this summary and we appreciate it's comprehensive and, you know, these are things that are raised by wetland scientists as far as protection of upland buffer from a wetland resource. But in the context of a comprehensive development, it's usually one of the first issues that's resolved. And to the extent there are modest requests from the Conservation Commission to respect some local interest, it's not uncommon for an applicant to say, yes, we can, we can try to play ball on those modest requests and see what we can do to respect the local bylaw. And I know Kristin can speak to it very briefly, but we already have taken some measures to try to protect some of the upland. And you can see, we did not completely propose grading all the way up to the limit of the wetland in some areas. So we were able to already identify that and try to preserve some of that. So I'm going to turn it over to Kristin and then, you know, I'm sure Dan has something to say as always. And if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer questions from the board. But I'll let Kristin talk about just how we've addressed the wetland in the center of the site from an engineering perspective and just where she stands as far as the stormwater management calks.
Hi, Kristin Labrie, Andrew Survey and Engineering. With the review that we got previously on December 24th, I believe, we're working through some of those comments where relocation of the pond that's upgradient from the wetland series, we're actually moving that down gradient to prevent point source discharges into the wetland. So there is currently no design with a point source discharge and no roof runoff is going into that wetland series. They're being collected by either gutters that point them forward or they're being collected by dry wells as we're evolving the design. So that wetland series has no impervious surface runoff to it. As for pre and post-design, we try to keep the pre and post exactly as it is. So if there's point one CFS going there in the pre, we try to keep point one in the post. Stormwater standards are that you reduce it, you either keep it the same or reduce it. We are trying to keep it the same as, much as we can to prevent that. Typically, when you change runoff areas from woods to grass, you don't reduce runoff, you increase it. So the likelihood of it drying up is low. If anything, more runoff would be going there, which is why we then take into consideration BMPs, dry wells. The runoff number from woods is about thirty. Once you change it to grass, it goes up. So the, it runs through faster and more, less gets absorbed to the ground and you get more runoff. Which is why when you're going from woods to development, you have to bring ponds into the play to hold that water and to attenuate it and then slowly discharge it into the groundwater. Other than that, it'll be evolved more through the stormwater report that'll be given to Tetra Tech and they can review it further.
Thanks, Kristin. So as you can see, it's not that this, these issues have not been addressed at all. We are conscious that this is a protected area on this site. We're designing with an eye towards maintaining that. As Sean Riordan mentioned at the last hearing, it is a unique wetland and it does add some character to the site, which adds value to our project and we want to preserve that and protect it. So we'll do that within the confines of the State Wetlands Protection Act. And again, to the extent the CONCOM has any specific concerns regarding performance standards in the local bylaw, please. We would have loved to have seen those comments, but we'll respond to them as soon as we have.
Dan, go ahead.
All right. So just first on Chris's comment about other Norfolk projects, I've worked on probably four or five in the last ten years, I guess, and I've never seen a project like this where you actually are filling a wetland with a road and you have road and alterations right up against the wetland boundary. So I take exception to the comment that this is being treated differently. I think this presents facts that are much different from the other 40B projects that this board has seen. Just going back to this board's obligation under 40B and Chris's statement that they're going to comply with the state law. Any applicant under 40B has to comply with local bylaws unless they're waived and the board only needs to grant waivers from local bylaws if the developer needs them to make a project economically viable. So the burden is actually on the developer to say, hey, I'm not going to comply with your local bylaws because to do so would make this project uneconomic. That's the standard review. So the board should be looking at the bylaws in that, through that lens, that, you know, is there a reason to waive these for the viability of the project that outweighs the concerns that are presented? And so that's why it's important for the board to understand what the values are here of this wetland. And that's what Marty's recommendations are for, is for us to understand and collect data evidence as to what value this wetland provides to the town of Norfolk, to this neighborhood, to the groundwater. So I don't, I think it's actually a really very reasonable list. With respect to the vernal pool, so Chris is right, it's not a certified vernal pool. So today, no one on this property has to treat that as a certified vernal pool. That doesn't mean it's not protected. As Marty explained, it's a local bylaw vernal pool, meaning that it's protected even before it gets certified. So the time to understand whether a vernal pool is in fact a qualified certifiable vernal pool is in April. And at that time, we can all decide, is this something that needs to be protected or not? But to say today that they're not going, that they don't have to comply with it is, I think, a little bit incorrect. That they, they may have to comply with the regulations that govern certified vernal pools if it turns out that it is a certified vernal pool. With respect to Marty's list, Chris said that A through C had to do with habitat. I don't think that's totally accurate. I think, I mean, Marty can speak to that, but I don't think that's all going to the habitat issue. I think it was more overall buffer zone, what's in the buffer? And again, it goes back to this kind of qualitative thing. Is this buffer important? What's, what value does this buffer have to habitat as well as other impacts? Part of the buffer is this upgradient, this stream, and we can disagree over whether it should be called a stream or not. But the fact is, is that this, this channel, the stream, does feed the wetland during wet weather events. And so under the project design, a road is going to traverse or cut across this channel area. So I definitely would like to understand more from Kristin as to how that's not going to decrease the water going into the wetland. If the, if the wetland is getting water from the stream and you're putting a road through it, how does that, and the water that hits the road is going to be going into a drainage basin, how does that not decrease the runoff?
I think the board can answer that for themselves. I mean, that's, that's basic engineering. You've dealt with these issues before. You make sure that wherever you're collecting water, it goes into a drainage system that then either infiltrates or has a point source discharge into that same area. So it's not like.
But Kristin just said, there's not going to be a point source discharge.
She's going to either infiltrate it or put it to other areas where it's indirectly discharged. It's not discharging over impervious area into the wetland, which is the standard, okay? So the idea is that overall, the water that's going into that wetland today is going to continue to go into that wetland at the same rate. And I know Mr. Howe can answer these questions for the board as well, if there's a concern there. And I think you know the answer as well, Dan.
Okay, well, that's, that's why the water budget's important. And so whether that's part of a stormwater exercise or if it's a separate exercise, it doesn't really matter as long as it gets done. I've actually never seen it done as part of a stormwater exercise, but that's great if you want to do it that way. Either way, those calculations should be provided and there's, there's a standard for doing that. So that's all I had to say on that point.
Dan, if I can add, it is required under the stormwater rules and regulations that if you're moving stormwater from a wetland resource area, you have to provide the water budgeting.
Now, with respect to the stream, maybe Marty can address this. I was under the impression that, that the stream would qualify as a local stream, even if it doesn't qualify as a state intermittent stream. But Chris was saying that there has to be a definite channel and that no one has established that. So can you address that?
I actually looked up the definition of definite and there really isn't one. I mean, when I was on the site, you clearly could follow flowing water down the hill in a defined channel. So I'm not sure why that would not be a stream. It meets the definition of a stream under the bylaw. There were sections that discontinued flow, maybe ten feet in places, maybe less in other places. But in the bylaw, it's, that actually is talked about. And it talks about it flows in a definite channel above or below the ground. And I think what they tried to do with that definition was to capture these types of intermittent streams. And, you know, it all depends on what type of soil is below that stream bed at that segment. It could be more impervious or more pervious and it just, and at the time when we saw it, maybe the groundwater discharge wasn't quite high enough for it to be a full continuous flow. So by definition, I feel that would be a protected resource area under the bylaw. And then again, the state in its order of resource area delineation called that area a bordering vegetated wetland. So what was it bordering on? The stream. So it just, you know, it makes sense to me. And, you know, the comment on the ORED not identifying the vernal pool when the state was out there, a vernal pool is not a resource area. So the state cannot approve its boundary. So it would not be part of the ORED process. So it would not be part of the ORAD process. And another point to the grass having higher runoff rates. The whole point of that stream is it's fed by groundwater. So if you are, say, for instance, the houses that butt up to that stream on both sides do slope the back of the road, the houses do slope down towards that stream, it's going to be quicker runoff, whereas now it's slow recharge. So it's slowly recharging to that stream, which it keeps the water budget constant. Whereas runoff from a storm event, it's going to run off into the stream, and it's going to flow downhill. So it's going to be much slower and less controlled. So there's going to be a change in that flow source out there. I didn't look at how the back of the yards are sloped, whether they're sloped to the stream or away. I know a lot of times, front of the yards are sloped towards the street in the street drainage collects the runoff, and then it brings it someplace else on the site. So there's going to be a change in the amount of recharge in that area adjacent to that stream. And they just need to take a look at it and provide you with an analysis of what that means, and quantify it.
Marty, can you just answer the question on the wildlife habitat assessment? And I think Chris was pushing back on that, saying that that's not something that they feel it would be required or is justified. Can you remind me and the board, when is a wildlife habitat evaluation required under the state law? And would this project trigger that requirement?
I'd have to look. It's triggered when there's an impact to a resource area that's protected under the state. So at the southern end where the road crosses the stream and the wetland, if more than 50 linear feet of bank, or 10% of the total bank, whichever is less, is altered, then a wildlife habitat evaluation is required. So there's actually triggers for a wildlife habitat evaluation in its resource area impacts and the amount of it.
And do we know whether that's triggered here yet? Have you looked at that?
I don't know. I don't think it exceeds the 50 linear feet. And, you know, and the 10% of the total bank on the site's probably quite large.
Okay. So we can also get follow-up from Dave or Janet about the extent to which the commission requires any kind of habitat assessment with respect to a local bylaw otherwise?
You know, relative to that, the regulations, the performance standards, do say no adverse impacts of wildlife and wildlife habitat as a result of a change in runoff flows. So wildlife habitat's looked at relative to the change in the runoff flows.
Thank you. Chris, did you want to comment?
Yeah, so just to confirm, the stream within the outline of the delineated wetland is protected. We're talking about, again, this local bylaw that would protect what we are saying is an alleged stream outside of the wetland. Clearly, yes, if it's bordering vegetated wetland within the resource area that's been delineated, that whatever's at the center of that, if it's a stream, it's a stream, is being protected under the state Wildlife Protection Act. We're talking about the local bylaw that would protect upgradiant. We don't feel as though that's a definite channel. But regardless, we're asking for a waiver of that, and we don't think it's consequential because ultimately, if the concern is balancing water in and out of the wetlands, that water's not going away. We're accounting for it. To the extent, if it were altered, we are accounting for it. You know, if the CONCOM recommends that some sort of habitat study is done as a condition to final approval or in connection with the notice of intent process, we'll look at that as a, that's the type of thing we would look at as a proposed condition. But as far as, you know, submitting that to the board at this stage, it's just, it's a non-starter. It's not something we would consider doing as a prerequisite to receiving the benefit of a comprehensive permit.
Just one final point, and then I'll turn off my microphone. Chris also mentioned something to the effect that a developer is allowed to do work within a buffer zone, you know, potentially right up to the edge of the wetland itself. And I know Marty mentioned that in her experience, DEP has been pretty liberal in allowing projects to work up against wetlands. But that, just so the board understands, there's no policy or rule that says you can do that. It's just that it's a case-by-case situation. DEP only reviews these when there's appeals. All projects first start with a local conservation commission, wherever they are in the state. It's only when there's an appeal, it doesn't get to DEP. And DEP, in those cases, looks at the project on a case-by-case basis, considers the impacts to the buffer, whether the buffer should be protected or not. And so you shouldn't treat this as some kind of like blank check that every project can go right up against the wetland boundaries.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Dan. Why wouldn't we want to do a science-based buffer zone analysis now? I mean, Marty raises enough concern in my mind with several of these issues. Why wouldn't we want to do something like that now?
I don't, I think you should. I think this is a reasonable request, given all the waivers that are being requested. I think there's two reasons. The applicant is asking for a lot of waivers from the local bylaw, and objectively, there's a lot of work proposed within the buffer zone. And there's also credible evidence that there may be a vernal pool in the middle of this wetland. So I think those factors, in my mind, justify this kind of analysis.
Would the CONCOM request this, or would this come from us?
Well, I think that, oh, no, it would come from us. But I think it's also important to get some feedback from the CONCOM because we want to make sure we're doing what the CONCOM would have done. You know, the board should not be going off and asking for things that are above and beyond what ordinarily would be required for a project like this.
So before we go down that road, we're going to be checking with CONCOM to get their input first.
Right.
So I think the next thing is for you to present this to the CONCOM, see if we can get them to weigh in on it, and then we'll go from there. Okay?
Okay.
Fair enough?
Well, I can give you our answer now.
You may want to hold off.
Well...
It's a long night.
We will not be offering an upland habitat study in order for this board to evaluate whether or not it's going to grant waivers from the CONCOM's bylaw. And I'll articulate that in a written response to this request for information. I plan to do that, and I think it will become evident as to why, once the board sees our rationale.
But just to be clear, Chris, the habitat is only under D4. A, B, and C are not specific to habitat.
Excuse me?
I want to be clear that when you say you're not going to do a habitat analysis, that the habitat analysis was only under paragraph D4. And it's only a part of D4. Paragraphes A, B, and C are more broad about impacts to the buffer.
So that we're all on the same page. Anything other than a hydro geoanalysis of stormwater and a water budget, so as far as, when I see the word "science-based buffer zone analysis", that's, in my mind, that's a request for a habitat study. And I will tell everyone, and this board knows, we do our best to maintain habitat and protect the environment, but that's weighed against the need for affordable housing and the need for development. There was another article in The Globe Today about development of housing in the Commonwealth. So these are critical present issues, and you're going to lose some upland habitat. It's going to happen. We all know that. It's a question of whether or not that's going to supersede the need for this project. So we'll write a letter, and you'll see how that plays out in the context of the CONCOM's bylaw. We'll look at the bylaw directly because if there's no existing bylaw on that specific issue beyond just "we want to protect habitat", then that should answer the question, and Dan can give the board the legal analysis relative to that and why that would rule against requiring it at this stage. And maybe it might come up at a later stage, but we'll leave it at that for now.
Marta, thank you. We'll hopefully have you back. I'm sure we will.
Chris, can I ask just a couple of questions with regards to what we're discussing? Chris, you said that the state hasn't certified any vernal pools on the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
But isn't it incumbent on the landowner to be the one who presents that to this state? The state doesn't, in other words, I don't think the state comes on your property or the applicant's property to certify vernal pools. So isn't it on the developer or the landowner to go about that process?
So I'll speak from anecdotal experience in doing this type of development work. If it's not a certified vernal pool, on the date that you get your superseding ORAD or ORAD, then it's not going to be protected as a state-certified vernal pool. That's the critical date. If, in the course of applying for the ORAD, somebody comes out and evaluates something and is really concerned about an area, then that's when it would come up, and they might, the CONCOM in the process would say, "Hey, do a form on that resource." And if it qualifies, then your ORAD's going to show that. You know, we'll debate about what ANRAD applied for and all that stuff. I don't want to get into that. But generally, and again, anecdotal, without going back and looking case in verse, if it's not a certified state vernal pool on the date that you get your ORAD, then as far as the planning for this development, we don't have to take it into account. And it's not protected. That's my experience.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Marta, can you, do you want to comment on that first? Or Dan?
Can I actually weigh in on that, Chris? It's actually ironic that Marty's here because this very issue came up in the project that Marty and I worked on together in Dayton on a piece of property that Chris is familiar with because you now represent the applicant on it.
Very incestuous.
Chris is not correct on this point. Okay, so if the ORAD does not address whether there is a vernal pool or not, then it's not binding on whether there's a vernal pool or not. ORADS are only binding on the resource areas that are addressed in the ORAD itself. So he could have an ORAD that's silent on vernal pools, and then if a vernal pool suddenly pops up and someone certifies it, they are subject to that certification of the vernal pool. There's case law on this. There's case law from DEPOADR. And this actually came up in the Dayton case, and it's black letter law.
Very familiar with all those cases, and the fact pattern and that site. And I think it's, I understand what Dan's saying. There are very different issues at play here. But as far as whether there's a vernal pool on this site, there's not, and there's not going to be. So it's not there for our planning purposes.
No, I was going to bring up the same point that Dan did. Marta gave us testimony earlier that the vernal pools are not proud of the ORAD initially. So I know, I contradicted what Chris was telling us.
We'll wait for your letter. We'll pass this on to the CONCOM, and then we'll move forward. You have another one?
I got another one.
Okay.
With regards to not protecting or looking at the 100-foot resource buffers, to me, it sounds like, based off what we've heard, that this, it's likely that this stream is fed by groundwater. And I guess, if there, in my opinion, I would think if there's blasting in the 100-foot buffer zone, there's a high risk that something could happen to that wetland. So maybe a consideration would be a condition that there would be no blasting allowed within the 100-foot resource buffers.
That's actually, that's a very good point. So this is one of those unique local issues that might not otherwise be addressed. We know that there's some ledge on site. So clearly, this board has every right to know if we're going to be blasting right on top of the wetland. So we're going to, we'll take a look at that. And we should be able to get you an answer. I think we'll take a look at where it's at, but I don't think we're proposing any. And if that's the type of condition that this board would want to impose, that would be something that would make sense and that would be covered under 40B. So that's something we can look at.
I'm sure that'll be part of your 215 analysis when you present it, right? Because that's when you'll be looking at your stormwater again, correct?
I think what we're saying is we'll... Yeah, we'd get you an answer even before that.
Okay.
The only thing I'd add with regards to that, to me, it would seem like a fair condition based off the grading that's proposed around the site. I think there's, you know, the only thing that would be critical, in my opinion, about a condition like that that would prohibit blasting within the 100-foot buffer zones is just the two locations where that road is close to the wetlands. I'm just taking a look at the grading right now. I'm not sure even if there would be a substantial amount of cut for the road. In my opinion, I think that'd be a fair condition to protect the wetlands.
We're not done with this topic, so...
This is poignant because along those lines, there are general conditions that the CONCOM can suggest and that this board could suggest to protect upland buffer area. So we all know we want to protect upland buffer. Rather than commissioning another report that's going to say, "Yes, upland buffer is going to be affected by this project", if there are certain performance standards that your consultant or the CONCOM wants to propose for you to incorporate in the permit, we can look at those performance standards and say, "Yes, we can meet that. No, we can't." And then you've protected the upland buffer that we're concerned about. So these types of things are...
I think they're poignant, and we're going to wait for the CONCOM to give us their review. Then we'll be back with you on these, as well as with Marta regarding these matters, okay? So we're just not going to close it out right now. We're going to wait for the CONCOM to give us their opinion, and then we can look at these again, okay? Fair enough? Hello, Chris?
Well, I...
We're not going to close it out. So in other words, are we closing out that there will not be a science-based buffer zone analysis? No, we're not closing that out. I know you've said you've closed it out, but we haven't closed it out yet. We're going to wait for the CONCOM to get back to us, and then we'll relook at it, okay? You're going to give us a formal response. We'll move from there, okay?
Am I correct in understanding, Kristin, that you were discussing the water runoff into the area? You were discussing that the water would be replenished, there wouldn't be any loss of water?
From our analysis points, correct.
Okay, but that would be a change in drainage. And I mean, change in drainage isn't allowed in these areas, any type of alteration.
Alteration is allowed inside the buffer. Drainage, the pre and post net runoff is not allowed. It can be reduced. It can't be increased. So you can change it, you can change the finish of the land as long as the runoff is equal to or less than your pre-development.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. All right. Now we'll get into the traffic study. So again, thank you, Marta, for coming in. We'll see you again. Chris, Phil, do you want to take the floor with regard to the traffic study?
Yes. I'll start out.
Did you receive Dan's letter on the 29th?
Yeah, last night, right?
Yes, last night.
You were working late last night, Dan.
Ford just sent the email late.
Amy, could you pull up the seven-sheet set of site distances that the chairman now has in front of him and that Phil submitted?
I think we have those as well, Chris, in front of us.
Okay. So we've had several hearings where we've discussed the site distances at the proposed project entrance. And we've discussed intersection site distance, stopping site distance, and also... and also site distances with respect to the left turn of a vehicle traveling southbound on Seekonk Street, taking a left into the site. All of those site distances are a function of the observed speeds on Seekonk Street. And we had done initially a analysis where we put sensors in the road to try to collect data on the speed of vehicles traveling along Seekonk Street. And we had done that several years ago, I think it was two or three years ago. As we know, this project had a hiatus there when we were waiting for other projects to finish. But when we did that analysis, the 85th percentile came back at 38.5 miles. Oh, sorry, the original one was 40...
The original one was 40 miles per hour northbound, 41 miles per hour southbound.
Sorry, so two or three years ago, it was 40 and 41 miles per hour respectively. Since that original report, certain things changed as far as some of the signage along the road. And we just went back and did an updated analysis, which revealed a different observed speed of 38.5 miles per hour. So there was some back and forth with the traffic experts about what speed we should use for our design standards. And the board's peer review engineer said, I want to see what the site distances look like using a 40 mile an hour design speed. So in order to depict those site distances, we produced the seven-sheet set that shows in many instances the site distances required for, based on vehicles traveling at that 40 mile an hour speed, all right? Now, that was at the insistence of the board's traffic peer review expert, saying, you know, there's some evidence that vehicles are going fast along this road. We want to use 40 miles an hour and see where it ends up. At the same time, we had discussed the possibility of installing traffic calming measures, including a speed feedback device, which is one of those lit signs that has a radar in it. And it gives vehicles traveling what speed they're traveling and generally it causes vehicles to slow down. We also talked about installing some other signage, about curve ahead, driveway ahead. And we've presented evidence to the board and submitted links to some studies that show that the installation of those measures reduces the observed speeds along traveled roadways. One in connection with a road that was very similar to Seekonk Street. And we provided the board with that information. And it's our position and we assume the board's engineering peer review will concur that traffic calming measures reduce speeds, which then allow us to reduce the design speed. So the memo that you received from your traffic expert and from Dan Hill's office was a critique of our sightlines based on that 40 mile an hour design speed. And they identified certain areas where our sightlines cross over adjacent properties. So to be sure, our traffic expert, and you can speak to this in a little more detail, is of the opinion that even at the 40 mile an hour design speed, the encroachments of sightlines over adjacent properties are de minimis and does not create an unsafe situation that would prevent this project from going forward at the 40 mile an hour design speed. However, I would point out that Attorney Hill's memo that the board received and the traffic memo that the board received from their traffic engineer are irrelevant because they both delve into the 40 mile an hour design speed. But what we're saying is that is not the design speed that we should be using. We've talked about the installation of traffic calming measures because everyone has indicated that this is a pre-existing condition on the roadway where we think it's a dangerous condition on this road, where vehicles are already traveling too fast, okay? So we want to make the road safer generally by reducing speeds. And you can feasibly accomplish the result of reducing speeds by installing a speed feedback sign. So one of the conditions that we've suggested at the developer's expense will pay for the installation of a speed feedback sign. We understand that the Norfolk DPW has actually requested funds for those types of instruments in other areas of Norfolk. We know they're effective. We know they increase safety. So we are proposing that for this project. Therefore, with that, with the installation of a speed feedback design, the design speed should be 36 miles an hour, okay? It will reduce the 85th percentile by four miles an hour to 36 miles per hour. And the sightlines that are at issue for this project are not based on the 40 miles an hour. They're based on the 36, all right? And at 36, all of the encroachments that Attorney Hill and Kim have identified go away. You don't have them, all right? They also go away at 38.5 miles an hour, which was the actual observed in the most recent test. And we would note that between the test two or three years ago that showed a 40, 41 mile an hour observed speed, a sign was installed saying curve ahead. And Phil can discuss a little bit more exactly what that sign was. But it shows that where the second test showed a reduced speed of 38.5, those types of measures are effective to reduce observed speeds. So we showed you the design at 40 miles an hour to be ultra-conservative and say, worst-case scenario, it's 40 miles an hour. And worst-case scenario at 40 miles an hour, these are the sightline triangles. And we still think they're safe at 40 miles an hour, all right? And we're proposing that configuration. However, however, the real design speed should be based on the design speed with the traffic calming measures, which is 36. And at 36, you do not have any encroachment for intersection site distance or stopping site distance. The encroachment on the properties to the left and right of the site entrance, where you get those little triangles, where the vehicle is set back 14 and a half feet, those go away as cars inch forward, as they approach the paved width. So at 12 and a half feet back, those encroachments go away as well. So we really should be looking at the 36 mile an hour design speed. The plans that the board has in front of them show that at 38.5 miles an hour, you don't have those encroachments, all right? And we comply with intersection site distance and stopping site distance. So if we have plans in front of the board that show that it complies at 38.5, then it definitely complies at 36, okay? So that's the analysis. I'd also point out Attorney Hill cited a couple of cases in his memo that I received last night. One of them was actually another case that I was involved in, Tiffany Hill, that had a similar arrangement. That project is being built right now. And the key takeaway is that ASHTO is a guideline. We discussed it at one of the last hearings, that they're a gray, it's a gray area here. It's not a yes or no. Attorney Hill's memo seemed to suggest that if you don't meet the minimum requirements, that the HAC is not going to approve the project. But that's actually not the case. There are several cases that I could cite to, and I have my phone. I'd read you a passage from one of them that generally describes the ASHTO standards being guidelines and that this board is well within its authority to rely on the information from the applicant's experts suggesting that under these configurations, even if we didn't meet the required distances at 40, it's still safe, all right? But we don't have to worry about that because we're going to be at 36 miles an hour if we install the speed feedback sign. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Philip Cherry, who's the applicant's traffic engineer. And he's going to talk about the effectiveness of those speed feedback signs and then how the plans show that at 36 miles an hour, all the issues that Attorney Hill's memo articulated and that Kim's memo articulated are nonissues as far as this project. So I'll turn it over to Philip.
Thanks, Chris. I think Chris did a good job of sort of highlighting the timeline, if you will, of speed studies and treatments that have been applied to, both for this project and to the, to Seekonk Street independent of this project. You know, focusing a little bit more on the sign that was placed there in 2018 before we moved to speed feedback signs. That sign that was placed there is an intersection warning ahead sign and it also has a supplementary 25 miles per hour plaque on that sign. I have a picture of it if we want to look at it. It's been in materials that we submitted in November and I believe it's been referenced at a couple of different meetings. But it's a, it's a common sign. It's a warning sign. But what I want to really focus on is that 25 mile per hour plaque that was, that was placed there. Once you place that specific plaque, most times you've done a study that's identified what speed that plaque is, what speed has been placed on that plaque. I was not part of this study, obviously, but it was erected in the time between the December 2016 data collection and the November 2019 data collection. And as Chris spoke to, I think that, that just speaks more to the fact that there's already a concern about speed at this location. Drivers are going faster than folks would prefer. There's other driveways along Seekonk Street where, you know, this is an old street. It might have evolved from prior to motorized vehicles. There's locations where, where the site distances at other locations may not be optimal. And so slowing down everyone on this corridor is safe. Not, not just for the applicant, not just for this project, but for everyone. So I wanted to mention that 25 mile per hour speed plaque was specifically relevant because typically that means someone, whether it was a town or consultant with the town, did a study to identify this should be 25, not 30, not 20, not 15, but 25, which is already 10 miles under that posted speed. Progressing now to the proposed and really, you know, committed speedback, feedback sign that we're willing to install. That sign would be installed for northbound drivers. That would be installed in advance of the roadway curvature, likely somewhere in the range of 250 to 300 feet south of the proposed driveway location. As Chris mentioned, I think we've all probably seen a speed feedback sign. Amy, but if you could pull open one of those files I've seen just to make sure we're on the same page here. It should be, go to speed, the third, the middle one, actually. Actually, no, the, yeah, the middle one's fine. That one's fine. Let's go to the next slide, please. One more, one. That, that's a perfect example of a, of a speed feedback sign. I'm sure we've all seen one. They typically have a static sign that's metal mounted with the posted speed limit. And then you typically have a digital sign that has your speed as you approach that sign. It's achieved via radar. Some of the newer ones incorporate different feedback. But really, the whole goal is to reduce speed here. And they've, they've been proven to be effective safety, safety devices in that they do reduce speeds. And really, they've been installed all over the country. In Norfolk, clearly, Chris mentioned that the Public Works Director's requested those and spoken to their effectiveness. I live on a street that has a speed feedback sign 200 yards from where I live. They're very, very common these days. As, as part of this project and really as part of other projects I've done separate from this, I've reviewed speed feedback signs. I reviewed one from a location in Shelburne, Vermont, that I found to be the most common to this, to this project. Some of these are applied on, on roadways that have posted speeds of 55 miles per hour. So I felt like that data was not as relevant. But this is from Shelburne, Vermont. If you're not familiar, it's a suburb of Burlington, about five or 10 miles south of there. The roadway this study was performed on is very similar to Seekonk Street in that it's in a suburban area. It's in a mainly residential area and that it, most of it doesn't have curb along the road. So there's, drivers have a little bit of a different feel. But this study was a longitudinal study, which I think is important in that speed feedback signs are particularly beneficial in that some, some treatments you can apply to roadways. There's sort of a principle that people see it, they may behave the way you hope for them to for a certain period of time, but then they regress to their sort of behavior that they were before that's unintended. Speed feedback signs have been shown to be, to have sort of a continuing effectiveness. And this, this shows that even six years after their installation, they have reduced speeds by eight and six miles per hour at this location in Shelburne, Vermont. There were other, excuse me, other speed feedback signs on this corridor. They were at locations that I felt were less, less applicable. They were near a school zone or they were an area that had curb. But those speed reductions were five miles an hour. So all of these were in the five to eight mile an hour range. And so that, you know, being conservative, we've taken a four mile per hour reduction off of the 40 mile per hour speeds that the peer reviewer and that Attorney Hill had incorporated from that, from that measure. So that's sort of the timeline and sort of the data and research behind these speed feedback signs. I'm sure we've all seen them, but just to give a little bit more of a background there. Amy, if you want to go back to the, to the sightline figures? So this is figure one and this is showing stopping site distance at 40 miles per hour. Looking to the north or for vehicles coming southbound, there is no issue. We meet the 40 mile per hour sightline with no problem. Looking to the south for vehicles traveling northbound, if you look in the sort of upper-left two-thirds of that page, we do show an inset there where there is a very slight overlap into a budding property of three feet. So this is the 40 mile per hour figure. Three feet is a very small distance. If you could progress to the next page, Amy, please, thank you. We show the available sightline within the right-of-way as, as was requested at the last meeting. And what this shows is there's 286 feet of sightline there, measured, measured based off the plan in the right-of-way. And so that 286 feet, if you do the ASHTO guidance calculations, that, that's equivalent to basically 38.5 miles per hour on the dot. I know that's sort of ironic given that's the speed we measured. It's just the way the calculations come to be. Stopping site distance is, is based on two different factors. One of those is braking and reaction time. If you're driving, there's been studies that show, you know, you have to recognize there's an event in front of you. Your brain processes it. You have to send, you know, you have to tell your foot to brake. The next is pure physics. It's how quickly are you decelerating? And so you, you have another part of that equation that's based on how quickly can you decelerate? And there's a standard for each of those components of that equation. And so you, you take that total sightline distance of 286 feet and you take those standards, which is a very conservative two and a half second reaction time. I think most of us see things in the roadway quicker than two and a half seconds. And then that's a 11.2 feet per second squared deceleration rate is the standard used in ASHTO guidance. And 11.2 seconds is, 11.2 feet per second squared is a difficult sort of number to throw out to say how quickly can you decelerate. But for another project that I've done totally unrelated to this one, people can accelerate at rates much, much higher than that. These are, these are rates that incorporate 85% of the population. So if you're in a U-Haul box truck, can you decelerate at that rate? Do you have brakes that have been worn down? It's a, it's sort of doubly conservative measure because of the two and a half seconds and the 11.2 feet per second squared. Both of those are conservative measures. So when you back into that 286 feet, you get a 38.5 mile per hour travel speed that's equivalent to that. And I know Chris has already gone over that was the speed that was measured and that doesn't even take into account the speed feedback signs that we've discussed. If you want to go to the next, next image there, Amy? So this is the intersection site distance. And to familiarize everyone with that again, that's if you're a vehicle exiting the proposed driveway, you need to have the proper sight distance to see, both in this case to the north and south along Seekonk Street, to be able to safely decide if you're going to make a right turn and then especially a left turn as you're crossing another lane of traffic. And as was requested at the last meeting, we clarified the overlaps with a 14 and a half foot setback, where that would encroach on the neighbor's property. As you can see, those are very small encroachments to the south. It is a triangle that, I don't know if that's showing particularly clearly, but I believe off the top of my head, the sight, the triangle encompassed in the private property was a triangle 1.5 feet square, which is about the size of my feet put together right now. A very small area. The area to the, to the north was slightly larger. But again, it was a one-foot triangle at the base that extended almost, I believe, 15 feet. But again, it's a very small sliver. When you're driving and you're looking out, you're, you're not looking at butterflies. You're not looking at a paper airplane. You're looking at a, a two-ton vehicle that clearly takes up, you know, it's 20 feet long. It's something that's very easy to see. So that, that's why when Chris alluded to sort of the, the de minimis nature of these sight triangles, So that's why when Chris alluded to sort of the de minimis nature of these sight triangles, that's what, you know, these are very small slivers that extend along Secoong Street there. If you could proceed to the next, I believe it's the next slide. If this is ten-foot setback. So if you inch your car up ten feet setback, and then actually, between the time we submitted these to the peer reviewer, actually earlier this week, we confirmed that not only do we meet this at a ten-foot setback, we also meet it at a twelve-foot setback. I know Chris said twelve and a half earlier, I apologize, twelve-foot setback. So a twelve-foot setback, a two and a half foot difference from that guidance. But in many cases, you know, you stop, I think we've all been in a driveway, you stop and then you inch forward a little bit. And that fourteen and a half foot standard or guidance, excuse me, has been in play for decades. And without being flippant, at that time, a lot of the cars that were being driven had hoods that were seven or eight feet long. I took the time earlier this week to look, even if you had an F-250, one of the largest, you know, crew cab F-250, a driver's eye is setback approximately eight feet, two inches, even in a very large vehicle like that. So one of the larger vehicles that anybody would be driving out of this, eight foot, you'd still have another approximately four feet between the front of that vehicle and the edge of pavement as a buffer if you're pulling up there. So we show here a ten-foot setback. I know it's not shown here. Have to take our word that we checked this out, a twelve-foot setback. There's no encroachment on private property with that twelve-foot setback. So that's the stopping and intersection sight distance. If we want to proceed, I know we were asked to also look at the left turn sight distance. The left turn sight distance is, you know, stopping sight distance rules sort of supreme in this, in these cases. You really need to make sure that if you're driving, you can stop in front of an object that's in the roadway, whether that's a car that's pulled out and is stalled in clutch or whether it's, you know, a ball or a dog or whatever. You need to make sure that you have that stopping distance, and we went over that a few slides ago. The left turn distance within trusty old ASTO here is called Case F. And that is based on making sure, it's guidance for if you're driving south, in this case, and turning left into that driveway, is there sufficient distance for really someone to see you turning in there? And so this shows the overlap. That overlap is a little bit more significant than it was for stopping sight distance. In this case, there's no shrubbery there right now. We understand that this is owned by private property. So if we want to go to the next slide, I believe it's on the next slide here, this shows the sightline within the right of way. And I believe that that number was two hundred forty-eight feet that that number shows there. And so that distance is, that's the distance available to someone driving north that they can see the southbound lane. Now, when you're making that left turn, as you turn left and you go and cross, what I believe in this case was the double yellow line or the figurative double yellow line, in this case, due to the geometry of the roadway, as you turn into that driveway, you become more and more visible to an opposing vehicle, just due to the simple geometry and the curvature here. So the real key is the stopping sight distance and making sure that someone can stop and see you as you've turned. And we've shown that from, in previous slides, we showed that we had the two hundred eighty-six feet of stopping sight distance. However, Amy, I'd also like you to go back to the, to that folder. If you could go to the, if you could go, I believe I put it, maybe it's in that same one you already have open, I believe. I think it's already there. If you could go another slide. So this, actually, back up one more. There are instances in which this left turn distance is not met. And stopping sight distance is sort of the guidance that reigns supreme here. We meet that at the thirty-eight point five miles per hour, also at thirty-six miles per hour. We also meet the intersection sight distance at the twelve-foot setback. FHWA, which is the Federal Highway Administration, sort of the overarching body for most of how these decisions are laid out, recognizes that in some cases, these distances are not quite what the Case F, as it's detailed here, could be. And so there's recommended mitigation measures. And I've highlighted some of those potential mitigation measures. These have been used on other projects, and in fact, some of these measures are actually applied to towns in Norfolk. Thank you, Amy. So one of those is, you know, making sure you know the advisory speed. Well, we're already planning and committed to putting the speed feedback sign to reduce those speeds. There's installing warning signs. There's a warning sign there, but with this project, we believe there would be either a supplementary sign that we could put in advance of that curve that would be there. And then there's also beacons that you can put on that sign to make sure they're visible. And then also lighting that intersection. If you're turning into a driveway, whether it's at dusk or dawn or night or potentially somewhat adverse weather, you want to make sure that someone can see there's a driveway ahead. So this is a list of potential treatments that's recommended by the Federal Highway Administration for this. If you want to zoom back out, Amy, and go to the next slide, I've just provided some examples of what these look like here. So that's another example of a speed feedback sign. Number two is actually an example of what the MUTCD or the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is another, you know, guidebook within the traffic engineering field outlines. The W-1-10 is simply the code for that sign. That is on Rockwood Road in the town of Norfolk, showing what a W-1-10 sign looks like. And that just gives guidance to drivers that, hey, you're entering a curve and in that curve, there is an intersection. So when we go back to thinking as a driver, there's reaction time and then there's braking time. That sign essentially reduces your reaction time when you're driving somewhere. You see that and your mind knows, okay, there's a driveway ahead. So you're not, it's not unexpected. Expectancy is a term in traffic engineering. Number three, bottom center there, is a beacon treatment that you can supplement any of these signs with that make them more visible. And then number four is the advisory speed warning sign that's at one hundred twenty feet south of the proposed site now. So that's sort of the potential treatment options that the Federal Highway Administration has recommended.
Thanks, Philip. So, you know, just backing up, we had provided the forty mile an hour sight triangles to stress test a worst-case scenario and really see what the configuration would look like at forty miles an hour. We expected, and we gave the board and the board's consultant the opinion that at forty miles an hour, that's safe. Again, even if you put fences along the property boundaries, vehicles have width. You know, you're not trying to spot a golf ball, you're spotting a vehicle, which is why the ASTO standards are guidelines and the case law says they are not to be applied rigidly. They're to be used as guidelines and references and to identify potential unsafe situations, but they're not to be applied rigidly. So we had thought that at the forty mile an hour, we would get some feedback that, yes, we concur that the configuration is safe. We also thought that there would be a notation to the effect that, well, we asked you to go back and do an additional speed test, and when you did that, it came to thirty-eight point five miles an hour. So we're not going to use the higher speed, we'll use the current observed speed, given that some signage had been installed in the interim. So we were surprised when we got the memo from Kim and the follow-up from Dan last night saying forty miles an hour, sorry, you don't meet ASTO, this is a problem. It also did not provide any feedback or evaluation of our proposed mitigation measures, specifically the speed feedback sign. So we thought the response was going to be, yes, if you install a speed feedback sign, we concur that it will result in a reduction of traveled speeds and the appropriate design speed is thirty-six miles an hour. So we didn't get that. So we came tonight prepared to explain to you, you know, why it is thirty-six miles an hour as far as the design speed. And that thirty-six miles an hour does allow for complete uninterrupted sightlines for this project's site entrance. On the issue of the left turn into the project driveway, Philip has articulated why that is also safe at either speed, forty or thirty-six, despite any encroachment on the property that curves across the street. So, you know, I know Dan's prepared to respond to all these issues, and Dan could probably qualify as a traffic engineer at this point in his career. I know Kim's unable to be here, so I'm sure Dan has comments, but we'd like to hear Dan's feedback on that. And then this is another one that we've come tonight prepared to hopefully have a level of comfort with the board as far as the site configuration for the project entrance.
Yeah. All right. So I just want to ask a question to Phil. That sign number one is, that's the one on Rockwood Road, you said?
Sign number two is the one on Rockwood Road. Sign number one, excuse me, is an example of a speed feedback sign, just for the benefit of the room.
Isn't there a feed, I thought there was a speed feedback sign on Rockwood.
There is.
At Gumps Farm, there's one right there, just put it up.
Excuse me, at Gumps Farm, there's a feedback sign.
Okay, but that's not shown here.
Okay, but number four sign is actually just offside the property.
So what you're proposing is a speed feedback sign akin to the Gumps Farm sign, is that right?
Yes, there's a variety of different installation types, and I won't get into that. But what's shown in number one would be a very stereotypical speed feedback.
It's an electronic sign that measures by radar the speed of the vehicle approaching it?
There is a radar device typically installed behind those signs that sort of literally sees through the sign, if you will. It usually has, most of them are solar powered, so you don't need any power service connection to anything. And, you know, they typically show the speed, the one on the street that I live in, if you go in excess of a set threshold, it actually says slow down instead of the speed. You know, for levity of the room, some of them now actually have emojis and a frowny face if you go too fast. But there's a variety of different types of treatments you can apply here.
Did you look at the statistics from the speed feedback sign that's actually been installed on Rockwood Road? The town has been collecting statistics since that got put in. And the reason that got put in is actually, I think, Chris, it was your project or vicious project, that there was a concern about sight distances at that location and...
Chairman was very vocal about that specific concern. I don't know whether...
So did you know that the town is collecting the statistics? Amy, do you have that slide?
Give what's the next one, probably the next one.
The high-speed one?
Next one, yeah. Probably.
Well, this, this does show the range of the speeds.
And my reading of this is that the speeds that this machine is collecting is showing that the speeds are still significantly higher than the speed limit sign that's actually posted on there.
Is the blue the fastest speed, the middle?
The lowest.
The lowest.
Blue's the lowest.
I'm not clear based on highest and lowest if this is, typically, that would read before and after. Is this a before-after study?
No, this is not before or after, this is just current, this is current statistics after the sign got put up. And we don't have the before, but the point of this is, I think, that even with the sign up, we're still seeing speeds significantly higher than the speed limit.
Dan, this is the first, we're seeing this, and I mean, I don't know what we're looking at here. Can we please begin the benefit of this? But I would also point out that, you know, this is an interim from, I don't know how long this has been in place, but there have been scientific studies on these instruments at other locations, like the one that was cited in Vermont. And they're generally recognized to reduce speed along traveled ways. So if you want to provide us with the data from this particular one, we'll look at it. I know, again, anecdotally, that certain people in town have thought they were very effective to reduce speed, and they've actually requested that more of them be installed. So we'd love to have the benefit of this data. I know you were working late last night and, you know, you didn't have a chance to email this over, so as soon as you have a chance to email it over, please send it.
We actually didn't get it till this afternoon.
Yeah, we just got it from the DPW.
If you can send that out.
I would just say in general, too, most of these studies, the real benefit is seeing the before and after. I don't think, you know, I wouldn't say that a speed feedback sign will completely eliminate speeding. That's, you know, and I think any study you've seen wouldn't argue that either, but the reductions are reducing the eighty-fifth percentile speed. And then if you can reduce enough people speeding, that reduces the eighty-fifth percentile speed. You're always going to have people that are, that unfortunately are going too fast. But if you designed every roadway for the fastest driver, we would have curves that have three-hundred-foot radii and they would be the most, you know, you would never be able to design any sort of urban intersection if you only designed it for the fastest person you ever saw there. So, you know, an eighty-fifth percentile speed is also fairly conservative. It's saying only fifteen percent of people are driving faster than that.
So again, this is, what we're looking for is design speed. So this seems to evaluate speeds at different intervals, but we'll drill down on design speed. And again, in stress testing this, we just need to show thirty-eight point five, all right? Even at forty, we're okay. To resolve Dan's concerns, we need to show thirty-eight point five. We're suggesting that speed feedback signs get us to thirty-six. But we'll let Dan continue, sorry.
All right. Take a look at the data. It's sort of unique. It actually points to Norfolk being slightly different than the norm.
I would just say that each site is also different. You know, this may be in Norfolk, but, you know, there's unique characteristics to any given location.
But that, but that kind of goes to, I think, the point of being more conservative than just relying on a Shelburne, Vermont study. I think, I think it's very dangerous for any board to be making a decision like this based upon a theory that a sign is going to reduce speed without, instead of basing it upon actual data that's collected. And I think that's why ASTO requires the eighty-fifth percentile speed to be the design speed, not that plus considering some potential mitigation down the road. I understand you found the Federal Highway slide, but, and I'm just, I'm a little concerned about, Chris, your comment about not applying ASTO rigidly, because I think it kind of works both ways. I mean, you're suggesting we don't apply ASTO rigidly to essentially waive or lower the standard. But if you don't apply ASTO rigidly, what's to say we shouldn't be more conservative than ASTO? I mean, we're saying, or you're saying, you know, go down to thirty-eight point five or go down to thirty-six. But that's still based upon the eighty-fifth percentile. I mean, you're assuming that that is the more accurate eighty-fifth percentile. What's to say that this board might think, well, we don't think the eighty-fifth percentile is actually the most conservative, we're going to go with, you know, the seventy-fifth percentile or something different? Because the fact is, even with thirty-eight point five or thirty-six, you still have a significant number of vehicles traveling faster than that. And if that's the vehicle that causes the crash, it's still a safety problem. So I don't really think that, it kind of goes back to my concern, too, about backing up any kind of decision with empirical evidence and having scientific standards. The reason we're looking at ASTO is because it's a widely accepted standard that's used by everybody. It's used by towns, municipalities, it's used by the state government. And, you know, it was your proposal from the beginning to use ASTO as the standard. I mean, the traffic study that came in originally said, we comply with ASTO, here's how. So, I mean, tonight, I think you're suggesting that we should be more flexible with ASTO by allowing for encroachments, you're suggesting that these are de minimis encroachments, applying a lower design speed. I would feel uncomfortable about not using the standard that has been accepted by traffic engineers everywhere and has been accepted by the Housing Appeals Committee and appeals from these types of projects itself. So I think it's, I think it's appropriate to use ASTO and to stick to it and let the chips fall where they may. And I, so I just have a fundamental disagreement over the suggestion that somehow we can be flexible and ignore nonconformities. With respect to the design speed issue, we raised two concerns about the data collection that was done by your team in November. And one was that the location of the tubes was actually not in front of the driveway, it was further south, I believe, in front of the house that's to the left. And that actually is where the curve is in the road. And the second concern was that one of the two days that you clicked the... second concern was that one of the two days that you collected the data was a bad weather day, and so it was, Kim's judgment at least, that given those factors, and how close the 38.5 was frankly to 40, that it would just be prudent to stick with the 40, which was collected two or three years ago, and so I think that, I don't think that's an aggressive assumption, I think that's an appropriate assumption, or an appropriate figure to work So, just going back to the stopping site distance, just take these slide by slide, I don't think there's any question that the project meets stopping site distance looking north, the only question is looking south. The comment was made several times by both Chris and Philip, that these are minor, these are de minimis, it's only a foot, but I think that's kind of missing the point of geometry. I mean, if I hold this eight-and-a-half-by-eleven paper in front of my face right here, it's a small piece of paper, but yet, in front of me, it's eight-and-a-half-by-eleven, but this blocks my view of a much bigger area 10 feet away, or 100 feet away. So the fact that it's a de minimis encroachment, it isn't, that's not the point, the point is that it's close, it's a de minimis encroachment that, or a de minimis blockage, but it's really close to the car that needs to see it, and so if you have it right there, you're not, it actually is significant, even though it's only a small piece of paper, or a small piece of encroachment, so I don't, I don't think that's a good argument. I think, you know, that neighbor next door, on the right, where there is a very small triangle of encroachment, they have every right to put a fence there, or to put a spruce tree, and so that's the reason why ASHTO is unforgiving about even minor encroachments, there is no, you know, de minimis rule. When you draw sightlines, you're supposed to draw them so they don't encroach, and so I, you know, you chose to provide plans that show encroachments, I'm not, I frankly don't see those being relevant, I think the relevant plans are the ones that don't show encroachments, because we can't do anything about encroachments, it's not something that the board should be waiving unless they have some easement, and I don't think you do, and so that, to me, is a problem, even though it's only a few feet. With respect to the intersection site distance, there was a suggestion that you can move the line up, not 14 and a half feet, but move it up to 10 feet or 12 and a half feet, again, that goes to, are we going to apply ASHTO standards or not? ASHTO doesn't say anything about 10 feet, unless I missed it, it only says 14 and a half feet. In fact, ASHTO says, in the manual, and I have a copy of it myself, that ideally, you should have it 18 feet, if you can, but 14 and a half feet is the minimum, so I don't see a justification for moving that line up, even though it helps your case. So I, just, you know, reading these plans, you don't comply with a stopping site distance looking south if it's 40, and then with respect to intersection site distance, you don't comply with either north or south, given the curvature of the road, and one of the issues that, I mean, even if we were to accept the 38.5 figure or the 36 figure, 36 gets you down to around 250 or 260, Phil, I mean, somewhere around there, right?
Just over 250.
Okay, so, the problem, though, is that, looking south, there's a curve, it's a blind curve, and you don't even have 250 there, you might have, you know, 80 or something, it's less than 100, because you might be able to have 335, so if you look at the sheet, the intersection site distance sheet, actually, Amy, can you put that up?
This is going north. No, no, that's going south. This is going south.
Now, the next one, I think?
The one that 10 feet, Dan, or...
Oh, actually, I think you took that sheet out, right? I mean, you gave that sheet to us originally, but...
We've been courting with Kim back and forth, and we took that out.
Okay.
What we had sent to him was sort of an interim submittal, waiting on his feedback, and I know he's been tied up for some personal reason, and we submitted, we took that sheet out.
Okay. Oh, anyway, Amy, if you can go back to one of those other intersection site distance plans?
Yeah, so, the issue here is that, if the driver's here looking this way, they can see this far, but this driver actually could not see here.
Where, Dan? Can you...
Because of the curve of the road.
Couldn't see where you're pointing.
Sorry. So this driver, the line, it's kind of hard to see in the screen, but the line is this way, right? So the driver can see this far, which might be 335 feet, it's more than the standard, but as this car approaches, it's going to dip out of view because of this curve, and you can take a ruler on these plans, and you can see for yourself with a straight edge, drawing the line this way, you cannot, you cannot see any of this location without crossing this corner, and it's just a function of the geometry of the road, there's nothing they can do about it, it's just, unless they move the driveway further this way, which might help, but then that might create an issue going this way, I don't know.
Dan, I think another point to that is, you know, if you're taking a left out of the site, you'll be looking left, looking right, looking left, looking right, trying to pull out, and if you're looking right, and the car comes, you know, where you can see, and then into that blind spot, you look left again, you see it's clear on the right, you don't see any cars on the left, now you have the potential for a crash because you don't see that car, that's in your blind zone.
Right, and it's not a, it's not a de minimis blind zone, according to Kim, it's over 100 feet, and it could be, you know, three seconds, and doesn't sound like a lot, but it actually is when you're, when you're making a decision as a driver at an intersection like that, that's actually a long, long period of time, so...
Dan, it's actually, at 35 miles an hour, it's about 50 feet per second, give or take, so, it's about a two-second period.
So that, I think, even with the lower design speed, I think they still have a problem, or Kim actually addressed this in his memo, that there's still a problem because of that dip, that, at one, yeah, yes, you can see a car in the distance, but as that car approaches, you can't see it, and that actually doesn't, that doesn't work either under ASHTO, it's, you have to have a continuous line of sight for that entire distance, whether it's 305 or 255, or whatever that standard is. All right, and then looking north, intersection site distance, the available site distance, according to this plan, was 249, so, I mean, even that number doesn't meet your 38.5, because that, I believe, Phil, would be less than the required site distance for, what's the stopping site distance for 36? 250?
36 is approximately 255 to 260.
Okay, so your available site distance looking north was 249, so even reducing the design speed does not get you to where you need to be looking north, so I think you still have a problem looking south and north, even with the design speed lowered, if that was appropriate, which I don't think it is. We talked about the 10-foot distance, I don't think that's, first of all, it's not condoned by ASHTO, and it helps their case, but it's not, it's not the standard, and even so, even with 10 feet, you still have that problem with the dip in the road looking south. And then the left turn, it's the case F that Phil mentioned, now this is a driver coming down this way, wanting to take a left turn in, how far can you see down the road to be able to safely cross over the northbound lane, and ASHTO, for a 40 mile an hour design speed, requires 325 feet, and what they have available is 248. 248 doesn't meet even the 36 mile-per-hour design speed requirement, if it was 36, the required left turn sight distance would be somewhere around 290, so. So I think any way you look at it, I think this project is deficient with site distances, I mean, Kim could verify this after, I don't know if you're going to give us a new plan showing the lower design speed triangles, but I think any way you look at it, I think it's still going to be deficient, so the question is now becoming more of a legal question as to how important is that, that's something that you weigh against the need for housing, you weigh it as a safety concern and issue. I can tell you that my review of the HAC case law, and there's actually been several cases that have dealt with site distances at the Housing Appeals Committee, including the one that Chris worked on, and the HAC has consistently said that you need to have safe stopping site distance, and they've also consistently rejected the need to have the recommended ISD, which we're not even getting to here, this project doesn't come close to the recommended ISD, which is higher values. The recommended ISD is the distance that the driver who's exiting needs to be able to see down the road to safely enter the intersection, it's more for convenience of the intersection rather than safety, so the HAC has said, "We're not going to put developers to the test of the recommended ISD," but they have consistently said, "Well, yeah, we think that the safe stopping sight distance requirements are applicable," and there's been at least one case where that made a difference to the HAC, and in Groton, they actually required the town of Groton to convey an easement to provide a sight line to enable that safe sight distance, and that decision was actually overturned on a different reason, that the court said that a town can't, the zoning board can't force the town to grant easement under 40B, so that was overturned, but the fact remained that the HAC required that because it deemed it necessary for the safety of the intersection, so that's my interpretation of the law. I don't know if there's really any more data collection or evidence to be presented on this issue, I think it's been presented, and now it's going to be up to us to decide what to do with this information.
If I could just respond briefly, as was the case in Groton, and as is the case in most of those HAC cases regarding ASHTO, the debate comes down to the design speed. And in Groton, the developer's expert was arguing the design speed should be 36, the town said it should be 40, or whatever the numbers were, and the HAC said that the developer's expert wasn't credible in that case, went with the town's expert, and then said, "Doesn't matter, we'll give you an easement," and that led to the result that Dan just articulated. But to highlight the issue, it's the design speed. What I was expecting back from Kim was a concurrence that speed feedback designs result in a reduction in design speed, there was no commentary in his memo regarding that. I know we just received what I would identify as the town's anecdotal evidence from their own speed feedback sign, but I would think that the remaining evidence for this board to consider is a yes-no question from Kim as to whether or not speed feedback signs and other traffic calming measures are a generally-accepted method of reducing traveled speeds, or design speeds, which is the 85th percentile, for an analysis like this. So that's number one. Number two is whether Kim agrees or disagrees as to whether the 10-foot setback is a generally-accepted standard for the test for intersection site distance, the test location for intersection site distance. Understanding that Dan has said that 14 and a half feet back is the gold standard under ASHTO, my experience is the generally-accepted standard that is accepted in these circumstances among engineers when they're looking at this for these types of encroachments, where you don't have a lot of frontage, is that you can look at 10 feet, because cars naturally inch up, all right, which also addresses the concern that Devin raised about looking down towards the left around that bend. So, those two issues, you know, I understand Kim's unavailable tonight, and hope everything's going well with him, but if we could just get thumbs up, thumbs down on those two issues, I would then like to see, you know, what the board's opinion is on those issues, because if we get an answer there, then the only remaining issue is the F situation, the F scenario, which is the left turn in, all right? And that particular instance, we can reconfigure the entranceway, but we've discussed some of the consequences of doing that, how it affects the neighbors, whether it's the desired location, drainage, we are putting our presentation to the board that this configuration is safe, so once we get the info back on those two questions, then, you know, I think that will shine a light on which direction this is going to go in as far as the entrance configuration.
So, I think, Chris, you're suggesting that if Kim answers in the affirmative that 10 feet's okay, and 36 miles per hour's okay, it resolves these issues?
Sorry, that's not what, just to, I'm asking from an engineering perspective, from a traffic engineering perspective, he doesn't have to put a number on it, all right, just whether speed feedback devices are a generally-recognized method that effectively and actually reduce speeds, whatever they are, do they reduce speeds? Does he agree that they reduce speeds generally, and is that accepted in the industry now? Okay? Not whether it's going to do it on this site, not whether it's 36 miles an hour, I want to make a really low, you know, step for him to step up on, all right? And then, the next one is, again, not on this one, not whether it's okay, just whether 10 feet is generally-accepted in the industry...
12 even.
Or 12 even, or 12 is generally-accepted in the industry when evaluating these types of issues.
I was on the phone with Kim, I know, a couple weeks ago discussing this, and he, I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth who isn't here, but he said, "Can you at least show me it works at 10, because I know I've worked with that several times before?" So, you know, that's from Kim offering that, I'm not trying to speak about anybody who's not here, but this is something that we've done on other projects.
The question becomes whether or not we want to have a candid discussion about the safety of this configuration for this site, in this town, and this project, all right? Versus advocacy about, you know, we're not going to litigate this case, we can, but I don't want to, I prefer not to, I don't know if Dan feels the same way, but there's a level of advocacy, and there's a level of cooperation in really digging into the design issues, all right? I think if we can answer those two questions, then at that point, I think the board will have all the information it needs to decide whether or not this is something that rises to the level of a critical issue of health and safety that would somehow require further evaluation.
So, this may surprise you, but I agree with Chris that those questions are relevant, but they're not dispositive, and I don't think he's saying that, I think he's saying they're relevant, and I agree that they're relevant, so, and I've talked to Kim about this, and Kim has said that it's common for developer engineers to push that line up 10 feet and see what that looks like, and in the context of other projects, developer engineers have convinced permitting authorities to accept 10 feet as an appropriate benchmark. He's going to answer yes. With respect to speed feedback signage, whether or not that is a proven method to reduce speeds on roadways, sure, I don't think anyone disagrees with that, I think that's why they're there, if they weren't doing that, there'd be no reason to put them up, so obviously, they work, and so those are relevant factors in the global decision-making this board has to make to decide, how much weight are we going to put on the fact that this doesn't comply? And and do these things offset that in any measure? And it's really just your judgment. So it's.
It does change your conclusion, Dan Hill's conclusion, that it does not comply.
No, it doesn't, because Ashto doesn't say you can adjust the sight distance or the design speed if you have signage. Ashto doesn't say you can do ten feet. It doesn't, those factors aren't in Ashto. They're they're mitigating factors that a decision-maker like the board can consider. It's relevant, but it's not, it doesn't change the analysis.
As far as thirty-eight point five or forty or some lower speed, again, the debate comes down to design speed, and we can leave it at that.
And and you have to acknowledge that even even if we accept those things, you still have the problem with the southbound sight distance. It's, you can't, those things don't fix that.
At thirty-eight point five, there are, at thirty-eight point five and ten feet back from paved width, southbound is okay.
Looking south, not southbound.
Southbound stopping sight distance, I'm sorry.
You're referencing case F.
Sorry. Are you talking about case F? Are you talking about the?
No, I'm talking about intersection.
Travel, a vehicle traveling northbound?
Yeah.
Okay.
Intersection sight distance.
So thirty-eight point five, vehicle traveling northbound, intersection sight distance is a non-issue at thirty-eight point five and ten feet.
I disagree, and Kim disagrees because of the dip in the road.
You can't, Kim would say that you will see this car maybe here after it goes through this dip. You can see it here, and it goes out of you, comes back into you.
In fairness, this is actually the first time I've heard the dip issue. So I think you're pointing at.
Do you mean a vertical dip or a horizontal dip on this page?
No, not not vertical, horizontal. It's just, I'm sorry, dip is the wrong word. It's a curve.
So no, and and Dan, Dan, in fairness, you know, this is the first time that analysis has been presented. So I think part of what you're pointing at is the layout of the roadway and not the paved width. And then the question is, what does that look like at ten feet back from paved width? At ten feet back, can you see down, you know, linearly? And then to solve that, you could move the roadway. You could move the roadway at the at the entrance.
All right, so just just to be clear, it wasn't Kim's memo, and I granted it was sent. No, I got it. You've had it for a day and a half, but it it is in the bottom of page.
No, 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 that's Dan's memo. We got Kim's yesterday, whenever.
Yeah, but it is in here, and Philip can talk to him, so.
We're gonna, we're gonna look at that, we'll call it the dip issue.
Look, no, it's a curve issue.
Curve.
So, can we call it the dip?
I think I'd like, I think we, I want, I think it'd be good to put in writing a reply to Dan's memo from last night with it with his forty mile an hour, okay? We're gonna talk to Kim, even though we probably pretty much know the answer's gonna be with regard to ten foot back, thirty-eight point five. And then we're gonna move from there. So we're not gonna get a resolution tonight because, right, we do know that speed signs, we'd like you to look at the data from the town of Norfolk. I think you'll be rather surprised. And again, and we do have, we have a letter, and I don't think you've received it yet, from James Kershaw. Did you get that today yet? Did Amy, did they get that letter yet? The resident, the neighbor? The one you sent us, did they? Kershaw, okay. So he's, and I guess he's got some experience in this area, so take a look at that. And um, well, because again, the number one thing here, as you know, is critical safety. So one accident, it's over. So, and again, we we're starting to see, and I don't I don't think we even got the data, and we could probably get it, is we're starting to see a lot more accidents in the town of Norfolk very recently because suddenly the town is prospering and growing, and we're seeing a lot more vehicles. This site will put a hundred, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, maybe more cars on the road every day. So it is critical that we get this right. We can't go back later and say, ah, we blew it. So it is very important, and it's safety. I think one of the residents talked about what happened down the road on South Street in Medfield years ago, where someone actually got killed. That's not to say this is gonna happen, but we have to get it right. So, you know, this board may decide forty is the standard. We may decide we wanna use Ashto. We may agree that thirty-eight point five. But I think we gotta get it right. So I think we we need to know a little bit more from Kim. We'd like you to respond, obviously, to this, because I think it's important at forty. I don't know if Phil can do this. Phil, do you want, can you put together like a simple chart that shows all these? Instead of, you know, we have all these, which is great, but can we get a chart that shows at forty miles an hour, thirty-eight point five, and line item all the different items?
Just to be clear, that you want the chart to show the require, or the Ashto guidance distance at each speed?
So thirty-six, whatever the number wants to be. So when we're talking about this next time, we we really can clearly look at the different items. We can talk about the F factor. We'll talk about that a lot. All right, can we do that, do you think?
Yeah, I can.
What you're looking for is a table, a table that has in one column what Ashto requires for these different.
Ashto has that table. They just do it to every five miles per hour. We're talking about halves and tens of miles. I can put together a table that's more.
You do it at thirty-eight point five, forty, and thirty-six. How's that?
I can put together more detail. Ashto has that for every fifth mile an hour.
I think that will help us, because I think we have to get this right. It's probably probably the one of the most critical pieces of this whole project is the safety of that roadway.
I I wouldn't disagree with that relative.
Probably number one.
To the other ones. I think, I wish, these are the types of issues that I really wanted to dig into. And I think we've spent a lot of time in this project, you know, talking about some other issues, you know.
And we're getting there. We're getting there. It's just it's taking time, and it's it's a process, and it's it's a lot. I mean, you know, you read this, you read Dan's memo, and it's, you know, you go, oh, my goodness.
Kim's memo was a lot shorter than Dan's memo. Kim's memo was a lot shorter than Dan's memo.
I get paid by the word.
Dan's an expert. You said it. You said he's a traffic expert.
I'm bringing my traffic textbook next time I come for Dan.
Can we do that? I think we, and I think if all the board members have questions, but I think I think that's gonna be the basis. So, you know, you're not gonna get a thumbs up or thumbs down tonight. You know, what Kim says, it obviously is gonna be what this board feels. But we'll listen to what Kim has to answer with regard to those questions you posed, with regard to the ten feet back, with regard to the thirty-six, the thirty-eight. And also, I'd like you to respond to Dan's memo, do the chart.
We would appreciate, we would appreciate something from Kim in writing just on those two issues for the record, because I think it's important. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike?
You know, I just wanted to give Ted and Chris some feedback. You know, having been on this board for sixteen years and listening to attorneys and engineers fight, there's always a gray area, and there's also local knowledge. And most of us who live in this town have a lot of local knowledge. The speed feedback sign going on Rockwood, I go down that road every day, and every road, the feedback sign says, Mike, you're a jerk, slow down. I don't slow down. Seconk, we all know, it's a cut-through. Every day, somebody's late for work, going too fast, no matter how many speed feedback signs you have, people are gonna drive too fast on Seconk. Ted knows that. I know that. Everybody who lives locally knows that. So there's this local knowledge that we have that flies in the face of all the statistics and numbers and everything we've heard. And from my point of view, that, my perspective, that will weigh in very heavily in how I come down on this decision.
Couple of questions. So I'm slightly confused, and I just want some clarification. On the thirty-eight point five miles an hour, that does not include the speed feedback signs, correct?
Correct. That is, that is the data that we collected in the most recent, and there were concerns about that data. So the engineers went back and forth, and we said, you know what, we'll show you the triangles at forty. But we also suggested in the materials that Philip introduced showed that a sign was installed in the interim. So there could be some debate as to the result of that sign and whether or not it did help to slow traffic down. But it all weighs in on what number you pick.
Yeah, and then the uh speed feedback sign, so the speed limits on Seconk Street in that area, thirty-five miles per hour.
Correct.
So if the sign is flashing someone at, you know, you're going forty miles an hour, why would someone care, I guess? Because when I look at the Vermont, um, that that package you had sent us, that posted speed limit was twenty-five miles per hour. So there's a huge difference between going five miles per hour over the speed limit and fifteen miles per hour over the speed limit.
I think that the data shows they're they're effective at varying speeds. And, you know, the materials that we submitted, I believe, evidence that. So you can use them at any speed, and and there's data to suggest they're effective at twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five, whatever it is.
But that's, that's my point, is I I disagree with your analysis on.
It's not my analysis, it's.
But, no, it, but it is, because if you're saying that there'll be a substantial slowdown from forty-five, from forty, excuse me, to thirty-five miles per hour, if you take someone who's going forty miles per hour in the Vermont, and they're slowing down about six miles per hour or so, well, the speed limit's posted at twenty-five miles per hour. They're going substantially over the speed limit. I I I really don't think you can compare going from forty miles per hour with the speed feedback sign and expect someone to slow down to thirty-five miles per hour. We live in Massachusetts. I I think that's just not not correct of an analysis on that.
I think that's a fair point. The the posted speed there was lower, and people were speeding more. And um the multitude of studies that I that I looked at indicate that speed feedback signs are most effective at reducing the most egregious speeders. And that study sort of indicates if you're going fifteen over a twenty-five, you're, you know, you're really, you're really going much faster. But we've also got to remember, this is the eighty-fifth percentile speed. And so if you can get the few people on this corridor who are going forty-five in this thirty-five, or forty-six, or forty-four, or fifty to slow down to something even closer to forty, that is going to shift the eighty-fifth percentile speed significantly. It's not, to to decrease that eighty-fifth percentile speed, you don't necessarily have to get everybody who's going thirty-eight or thirty-nine to go down to thirty-five. You're trying to, the data from from other studies is indicating that these are most effective at getting the most egregious speeders to slow down in for that eighty-fifth percentile speed.
That's my point, is I would expect someone who's going forty, you know, let's just say forty-five to fifty miles per hour. Once again, you're going about ten to fifteen miles per hour over that speed limit. I'd expect them to slow down to about forty miles per hour based off what I saw in that report you had sent us.
Right, and so when you take the eighty-fifth percentile speed, just, I know that may be a vague term for folks in here. When you, when you take the eighty-fifth percentile speed, you categorize all the speeds collected at that site. And it is, if if you ordered them, say you had a hundred speeds, you order them from lowest to highest, and the eighty-fifth speed there is your eighty-fifth percentile speed for, for making it easy if there's a hundred people that that travel that roadway. Clearly, on this road, there's, there's more than a hundred people that went there in a day. But maybe, I I think we're on the same page, but I apologize if we're not. But like, if if you're going, if you're slowing someone down who's going forty-six or forty-seven, and you're getting them down to forty, they're the egregious speeders, and that is going to shift your entire eighty-fifth percentile speed down. And it may not shift it down by six or seven miles an hour. We're only arguing that it's shifting it, in fact, from thirty-eight and a half to thirty-six. We're only arguing that it's actually shifting it by two and a half miles per hour. We, we're applying it a four-mile difference versus forty. But you don't, you don't, just because a few of the the speediest speeders, if you will, are are slowing down by more than the total amount you're you're suggesting, the way the percentiles work out, that doesn't mean that that everybody's slowing down by six or seven miles per hour.
And I think at the end of the day, we've asked, hopefully, Kim can provide the board with whether he thinks it's bunk or what the data shows. And then the board is also going to add their own personal experiences and local knowledge, and wherever we end up, we'll end up. But the numbers feel pretty.
I'm not gonna go on this more. I I still disagree with your analysis. I I think that might be a good question for Kim, to get his opinion on that.
Maybe, Devin, I think what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the way the statistic works is that this is the speed by which fifteen percent are going faster. Right? And so if those people are already speeding, it it actually isn't shifting the eighty-fifth percentile speed down because those people are still above above that, above that number. They're just slowing down. So to your point, and to your point, you're saying these signs are really most effective at the at the fastest people. But those fastest people aren't getting down below forty. They're still above forty. So I don't, I don't think, I mean, I'm not a statistician, but logically, it doesn't make sense that this actually will have the effect of moving cars, moving that eighty-fifth percentile number lower. I mean, it reduces, it will reduce the speed of the fastest people, but I don't think it actually moves that number down. And I think that point, as well as, is there any, are there any studies that show long-term effects? I mean, I don't know about you guys.
The study we showed showed a long-term effect of of six years over time. So I think that that's one of the, these speed feedback signs were installed in two thousand and six. And the longitudinal study, part of the whole reason of that study was to showcase that they work over time. Some others, traffic calming devices, if they're temporary, you do something, people behave for a little bit of time, and then they they change. I'm not a psychologist. My father is, but, um, you know, for this project, the the whole point was that.
Have you seen him lately?
Fair enough.
Since you brought it up.
Only at Christmas. He lives in Dallas. But uh, back, back to the topic at hand, I mean, they they have shown to be effective over a longer-term period. And, you know, I I appreciate the discussion on the statistics, and there's other studies that we can submit and reference if if need be. But they do, they do show a longitudinal effect that that does show a benefit there.
I'm not gonna touch on that more. I think I've made my point on that. Couple other points I just wanna make. You know, we, I've heard the word de minimis encroachment. And, you know, we, we live in a town where, you know, brush isn't always maintained, and, you know, it starts to grow in. I I personally live on Creek Drive, which is, you know, probably a thousand feet down in the northerly direction from the project site, and people rip down the hill, you know? And that vegetation grows in over time. And how often is it cut? I'm not really sure. So, you know, you take the de minimis from just being, you know, what has been calculated. Then you start factoring in all these other different pieces where the vegetation starts growing into the roadway. Now, well, you you might have had two hundred and eighty feet before, which was, you know, five or ten feet less. And now, all of a sudden, you're down to, you know, as Dan was saying, that with that piece of paper. Now, all of a sudden, you start factoring in, well, you know, you got brush growing further and further into your your view. You just, you, we're losing a lot of of sight distance from these, all these different aspects. So I'm not sure if this is the case, in my opinion, where the de minimis would would work. The question I had in common also is just on those speed feedback signs. You know, as Phil stated, you know, most of those are solar-powered. You know, I, I tend to stay late at work most of the time, so by the time I'm driving past most of these speed feedback signs, I, they're already off. They're not working anymore. Maybe that's telling me I should just leave work a little bit earlier. Hopefully, my boss isn't watching this. But that, that's just another piece is, these shut off, and then what what happens? It's, you know, it might be cloudy for a couple of days, and now these speed feedback signs that were supposed to slow down cars around that corner, it's no longer working. People aren't seeing it. Now we're back to square one once again.
I think there's other battery adaptations that we could apply to that to make sure that that's less of an issue, but.
The one here in town is hardwired on Rockwood Road, so it's not relying on solar. Go ahead, Dan.
Just, just a couple more points. I, I'm sorry, Phil, if I'm picking on you, but when you said we should be designing the roads to three-hundred-foot radii, coincidentally enough, our primary road centerline radius is two hundred and eighty feet. So that's actually what the roads should be approximately designed to. And then just, just my last point is, you know, I I think that blind spot that we've talked about is, it's a substantial issue. And, you know, my previous comments with, you know, vegetation growing in, now all of a sudden, that that blind spot could potentially get worse and worse as time goes on. And, you know, if those, that brush isn't consistently cut back, there's a potential for a large problem.
Okay, good. Other comments from the board?
I've heard a lot of talk tonight about the, the speed limits and what they were three years ago, what they were a few months ago, and things like that, since the last meeting and this meeting. But I've heard nothing change on the sight distance of what you could achieve out there. out there. Obviously, there's been no easements with neighbors and things like that. I've heard nothing really address the issue of sight distance. Will we see that?
I mean, the speed.
I understand the speed affects what you, what you, what you should have the sight distance. But my question goes to the practical matter of, can you improve the sight distance out there regardless of what the speed is?
No. No.
You mean in terms of relocating the roadway?
Yeah, either their roadway or obtaining easements.
Relocate our roadway and then two other triangle to the right and left is, is a function of that ten-foot question. But as far as acquiring easements, no. So the one, the one, again, where we come up, as far as our analysis of, of these issues, is that left turn into the site F situation and whether or not the board wants to compel us to move the roadway. That's what we see as, you know, the only potential one that might require some redesign. You know, we feel strongly and we'll submit our memo about the design speeds and, and the other concerns. But we have an answer for that F situation and that would be the moving the road issue.
Just a general comment. I, I understand where you're, where you're at. It's just all this signage and warning, that's all great. But if you can't see, that's a bigger issue.
And, and our, our data shows that we can't see is, is what we're trying to show the board. And hopefully, you know, we can continue the discussion and get the board a comfort level on that issue.
You have a comment, Joseph?
Yes, I have a comment. Will you be, are you thinking about putting in a pedestrian crosswalk to accommodate all your travelers to the walkable train station?
Right. So, you know, we had this discussion very early on about potentially having a bus or some other infernal pickup that would service the residents and get them there. So we also talked about sidewalk mitigation. But we're not there yet, given that we're still, you know, stuck on some of these threshold engineering issues. But those are the types of discussions that we'd love to have about, you know, whether or not we can set the town with sidewalks or, or some other mitigation that will help make it a walkable, more of a walkable town.
And I, I also, just an observation. When you're exiting and you're turning to go south, that appears to be, I guess, larger or greater than a ninety-degree angle. I mean, if you just can't see, you also have to think about the appropriate body, you know, mechanics to be able to turn your neck, you know, have come to a full stop. They have, going into the project and going out of the project, all these cars have to come to a full stop. There's no yielding, there's no slowing down. They all have to stop. I haven't seen any mention about blinking lights, stop signs, you know, speed bumps. I mean, I appreciate the feedback sign. We did have one over the summer. And, and I can tell you, we're three or four months with Seekonk Street being closed, there was a lot of griping on Facebook on both the Medfield, Walpole, and Norfolk groups because they weren't able to access that cut through. It's heavily traveled. I differ in your opinion about what you think, you know, the speed, the, you know, how much people are speeding there. I think everybody on this board and everybody who lives in Norfolk can, you know, it's not a secret, you know, how much, how, how much people are speeding on Seekonk Street. Seekonk speed and the speeding speaks for itself.
You raised that concern before and we know, and you have good personal knowledge of that as well. But did you say that there was a speed feedback sign on Seekonk?
There was one for a while. I, I think.
It's a temporary one the police put.
It was a temporary one. It had wheels.
Didn't they put the gas, you're talking about when they put the gas main in?
Yes, yes. They did have one.
On a trailer?
Yes, it was a head wheel. So.
Down on the corner of Boardman and Seekonk, there was one.
So the one you're proposing, is that a permanent feedback sign?
Yes.
It's a permanent feedback.
Someone's one on Rockwood Road.
There was one, okay.
The time just voted the purchase to in November. Bob McGee said they were fantastic.
So, I mean, I just, the, just other ideas. I'm thinking about, you know, blinking lights, something. Because everywhere, I mean, in all directions, these cars have to come to a full stop.
From your experience, did you appreciate the speed feedback sign when it was installed on Seekonk? Did you feel as though it assisted with safety?
I sped by it. Me and my husband both did. And we were in the forties. But, I mean, yes, I mean, I would, you know, I like seeing those signs in other places, but, you know, people really should slow down. It's all, I guess, if they don't listen to it and they don't stop, I mean, what are you going to do? And if you can't see coming out, and then you don't have easements to go clear brush so that you can see better. And, you know, say, my father couldn't, you know, turn that, you know, you know, a hun- a hundred and ten degrees to be able to get out of there. I don't, it's just something to think about. And they have to be able to turn more than ninety degrees to go in too. So.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public with regard to the traffic?
Thank you. Larry Clark, Seekonk Street. As far as the speed reduction measures, this is a commuter road. I've been on this street almost forty years. And I'll tell you, a large percentage of the vehicles are going well over forty miles an hour. I, when I pull out my driveway, I nose out. Cars don't stop. They don't slow down. You know, I mean, if I see a car's nose out, I slow down because he might not see me and I might hit him. Nobody slows down. So if a car coming out in the road isn't going to slow you down, a flashing sign's not going to stop you. And to compare a sign up in Vermont, in a residential neighborhood, to a commuter, a heavy commuter road in Massachusetts, and we know Massachusetts drivers' reputation, to think any kind of signage is going to change, I think, opening up a big liability to lower the forty mile an hour restriction. I just hope the board will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else? Grab a microphone.
Good evening. This is Deborah Gershah from one forty-three Seekonk Street. I live directly across the street from the proposed housing project. As Josephine was saying that, you know, there was a lot of talk on Facebook from the different residents in the area about Seekonk Street. But Seekonk Street is also heavily traveled by outsiders to this area who are patrons of the Patriot Place complex, including the stadium. So as I said before, after there's a venue at the stadium, whether it be an actual Patriots' football game or the concert season, which is almost up to six months now at Patriots' Stadium, the people that come out of that stadium and they use a mobile app such as Waze, when they pass the cemetery in the Norfolk, they just floor it to the Medfield town line. I, like, my husband Jim and I can't actually go to sleep at night with the sound of the vehicles that are just flying down that street after a venue. So most of the people here, I would say, are family type of people, very polite, very sensitive. They'll have a lot of maturity that, you know, it's a trade-up town. Most people start cheaper towns, move to Norfolk, a lot of sensitivity. But you get people that have been drinking at the stadium who just hit the gas pedal. And my God, you do not want to go out to get your mail at the mailbox during those hours. Also, you know, I was just going to put my two cents into it, but my husband Jim and I have had three girls over the years. We've been that family that's fly down the street to get to a soccer game, hockey practice, CCD, et cetera. You put a family in a van with three or four kids heading to the soccer fields or any other venue that where families visit in Norfolk, you're asking for trouble if people do not take their time when they go out to that intersection to take mostly a left to go to the town facilities. So right now, my husband Jim is actually driving a school bus. He's driving a school bus on the Cape for two different companies. And he also drives a party van down the Cape. And he was saying, like, school buses are not agile compared to traditional cars. It's very hard to operate a school bus. They don't have the agility that an automobile has. And he said the most frightening thing is the acceleration of a school bus because it's almost to the point where school buses accelerate at half the rate of a car. So if there's a school bus that's trying to take a left to go to like the HOD school or the King Philip schools, they will have a really hard time avoiding any car that's flying to the Medfield side of the street because they will not be able to, there's not enough space to avoid any oncoming car. And they will actually not be able to pull, pull out fast enough to avoid an oncoming car. So when you think about this housing project, you're going to have to think about not only the residents who are up on the hill, but any type of school bus that goes up to fetch individuals to go to the school. And you're talking about van service to go to a potential train stop. You're going to really have to factor in van in the same equation as a school bus. It's not that easy to maneuver a van. And if you want more information, we put my husband's cell number on that letter we sent. But he not only drives a van, but he also drives a school bus, the full-size school buses and the mini-school buses. And he can tell you, all those vehicles are a lot harder to operate than a traditional automobile.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Karen Clark, one thirty Seekonk Street. We happen to be on the straightaway portion before you get to that corner that, if you were headed towards Medfield. And as my husband shared, we've been there almost forty years. And people go by, I used to stand out there with my kids, and they go by shaving, they go by talking on their phones, they go by putting their makeup on. They're not paying attention. They're commuters. They go fast. They really don't care about the residents, people pulling in and out of their driveways safely. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about just what the speed is on Seekonk Street normally. And what I heard this evening was when the, the equipment was placed, it was placed on the corner where people would naturally slow down. And it was placed there for only two days, one of which day was an inclement day. Would the town consider doing their own testing as to determine just what the speed is? Because we're kind of anywhere between thirty-six and forty, which I guess under these circumstances is a big difference with all calculations that have been made tonight. If another test was to be conducted by the town and you find out indeed the speed limit is forty-two, forty-three of, of the majority of the cars, that would really factor in to the decisions made by the board. And I guess I worry, in the long term, the liability the town could face if that kind of work is not done and it is permitted to, to go forward as planned. And as Ms. Gershah mentions, a school bus. You know, you're going to have kids coming in and out of there twice a day, not to mention the parents that drive their children. So I just think it's really important to, to get an accurate number as to just what the speed limit really is on Seekonk Street. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to follow up with Kim on, on that topic as well. Okay? Anything else, Chris?
Yeah, I just have one more question. My understanding is the town commissioned some survey work on Seekonk Street. Does the board know anything about that? And if so, were there any plans that were generated? Is there anything to suggest that the survey work that the applicant did is not accurate or needs to be adjusted?
We don't, we don't have any information on that yet. And Rich McCarthy's with us here. Rich, do you have any information on that at all? I hate to want to put you on the spot.
But you're going to.
You probably, you don't, it sounds like. Do you, Mike, Dan, I think.
Yeah, we, we do have a, we, we do have a survey plan. We haven't had it analyzed. The DPW director commissioned a survey of Norfolk Street from Fruit to Cleveland. So.
Did you get a plan?
I have it. Yeah, I can, I can send it to, sure.
Great. Thank you.
Is it stamped by PLS?
I think so.
Donovan McKenzie did it?
Yeah, Donovan McKenzie.
So there is a plan out there.
Thanks. We'll keep an eye out for it.
Dan, do you have anything else?
No.
So we, I think we are going to meet on the nineteenth. I think what we'd like to do is we'll obviously, Kim and Phil will probably have some conversations. Phil's going to put together a chart. We're going to ask Kim's opinion on a couple of different things. The ten-foot, the twelve-foot, thirty-six point five, the thirty-eight, or the thirty-six to thirty-eight point five. Get Kim's reaction to some of these, 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 this equipment that we're using to monitor speed. You're going to take a look once Amy sends it over on the Rockwood Road analysis, which I think you'll find is, is rather interesting. It actually points to a much different analysis of these speed signs.
May I ask how long that equipment has been installed on Rockwood Road?
I think the analysis, it went from today and it, it backs to, I think, when it was put in sometime in November. So it's only has three months of data so far. But it's, it almost talks to a ten mile per hour difference between posted and actuals in the eighty-fifth percentile. So it's rather, it's interesting. But take a look at it.
We would appreciate seeing that. I would just say, I think, three months maybe. Most of the other studies I showed showed a continual improvement over time as those were installed. But we're, we're happy to see that.
Plus, what's worth, will be worthwhile getting your feedback on it because it's, it's surprising right now. And Amy will send that over. We just, like I said, we just got it this afternoon. And no one's even had really a chance to analyze it yet, other than to look at the eighty-fifth percentile numbers compared to actual, actual speed limit, actual posted speed limit. Okay. Anything else, Dan, that you can think of? Did I hit it right with what we want to ask Kim? Is that pretty much?
Yeah, I think that's it. And then in terms of the next meeting.
I think we're scheduled for the nineteenth. Yeah, we're scheduled for the, oh. Amy, I thought we had this, I thought we were set up for the nineteenth. We were?
I don't think so, no. We said we'd like to do, what, nineteen, fourth main street on the nineteenth.
Fourth of March, I thought was the next available.
Yeah. We actually have, we have the twenty-sixth. We have a possible meeting as well.
Yeah, we were holding that open, maybe.
We're holding that up. Maybe that was for this. Can you do the, um, can you do the twenty-sixth?
My notes said that they were going to respond to the hydro requests by February fifteenth.
Okay.
And then when, when are we going to get, when are your plan, when are your civil plans going to be given to Sean for, for review?
So, so I was hoping to finish them and give them to him as an intermittent kind of for him to review them. So that way, we don't have to do a formal review, if, like, almost like a working session with him, where I could get him to him, he could look at him, we can go, work through things, and then maybe do like another mini revision without submitting, and then submit that to the board. I'm hoping to get him my plans by next Wednesday is my goal. If that's okay with the board, to kind of do a working session with, with Sean, to get finalized plans, just to reduce the time that the board's looking at them.
So I think any, we can meet anytime after mid-February. I think that'll be enough time to.
I think March fourth would be for sight.
March fourth works for you. Dan, you're all right. I mean, we may have, we may have another one on March fourth, but we can, we can accommodate both.
I personally won't be here the fourth.
You won't be?
No. I think you told us that last time.
Yeah.
And I think we told you to cancel your vacation, didn't we? All flights to Spain have been canceled. Did you hear that?
Was the twenty-sixth available?
I think it was, that is, are you here on the twenty-sixth still, Devon?
Yes.
Everybody else available on the twenty-sixth?
I don't know much. Sean.
I don't think he'd have that time to look at him.
I don't think you'd have enough in that.
For him to look at him, for me to work with him, and then for us to submit them back and him to do a formal review to give to the board. We have, if we ended up cutting out that working session and then it would, we'd be in the same place.
We better make sure Sean's available on whatever meeting day we choose because he's pretty important for this.
Well, we want to, we want to set a date.
Because I feel like he's going to need at least two weeks of review. So even if I get him to next Wednesday, it, he'd only have time to do a formal, uh, provision. He'd only be able to do a formal one that we'd have to submit to the town. There wouldn't be a working session in between.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can do that.
Amy, what's our meeting? What's our meeting after the fourth?
The eighteenth. If you don't have an agenda, then there's nothing to do.
No, we don't have an agenda. Well, do you want to continue to the fourth? And then if we have to, we'll bump it to the eighteenth? I mean, I hate to do that, but.
You probably want Devon here since it's going to be a, you probably want Devon to be here.
We do. And that's why, the only reason I continue to the fourth is, if we might just continue again, is just to set a date in stone instead of waiting till the eighteenth. Yes, do you have another problem?
I wasn't going to say anything. I got nothing.
You got nothing on the eighteenth? Good. Or do you want to just go for the eighteenth? I mean, it's, it's, it's a long period of time. But what do you feel? Do you want to wait till the eighteenth? Do you have a problem with going to the eighteenth?
It's really up to the applicant because they've, you've extended this until the thirty-first. That doesn't really, we're going to need more than. We're going to need more than...
I mean, by then, we'll have comments from the COMCOM, hopefully, so it could be, maybe it will be a very comprehensive meeting.
Right, so what's going through my head is, at this late hour, is that if we do go for the 18th, can we set, and I know last time we set some dates by which we were expecting to have some memos, and I know things happened, but if we could try to set some dates to have some definitive...
Responses?
Some definitive responses.
Okay.